Everyone, I call the day two of our State Board of Education meeting back to order. Ms. Maramba, will you please call the roll?
Board member Durham.
Here.
Board member Escarsica, here. Board member Esser, here. Board member McClellan, here. Board member Plomer, here. Board member Shuffle, here. Board member Schroeder, here. Board member Solis, here. Board member Varela, here. You have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Maramba. Colleagues, this might be the first time on our agenda that an executive session is the very first thing that we do. Actually, it was called to my attention yesterday that I accidentally forgot to do the pledge of allegiance. So, Mr. Varela, since you were kind enough to point that out to me, maybe I'll have you lead us in the pledge today.
Yep, no worries. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, colleagues, and thank you, Mr. Varela, for catching that yesterday. I was just in a hurry to get right into our business. Okay, so, we are starting the day with an executive session and we expect to be back at approximately 9:30. And if Ms. Maramba would please read us in, that would be helpful.
An executive session has been noticed for today's State Board meeting to confer with an attorney for legal advice regarding the second charter appeal for University Preparatory Schools versus Adams 14 School District under section 2464023A2.
Thank you, Ms. Maramba. Can I have a motion to convene an executive session?
So who?
Is there, it has been moved that we go into executive session. Are there any opposed? Oh, may I have a second? Well, we've got, we've got Board member Schroeder and Board member Escarsica.
The Board has concluded an executive session and we are back on the regular Board meeting record.
So, if we, if we didn't need a second, we've got one anyway. Thank you, Ms. Maramba. So, do, is there anyone opposed to going into executive session at this time? The next item on our agenda is the Colorado State Board of Education will now conduct a hearing in case number 23-CS-01, Seeing none, we are now going into executive session. the second appeal of the University Preparatory Schools versus Adams 14 School District. During this hearing, the Board is acting in its capacity to hear appeals of charter schools and will hold an appellate hearing under the relevant charter school appeal law 22-30.5-108. I'd like to ask the person chosen to represent each party to enter their name in the record along with the party they represent. Please also introduce the persons you have designated to answer questions for Board members. Only the individuals identified by the parties have the opportunity to address the Board. And I think we'll do that now. So let's start with the Council for University Prep.
Good morning. Hello to everyone on the State Board. My name is Eric Hall and I'm Council for University Prep Schools. And with me to my immediate right, I have David Singer, the Executive Director, and then Carla Salas. She is the Dean of Operations for the hopefully new U-Prep campus in Adams 14. And then finally, Juan Peña. He's a Board member at University Prep.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hall. And then, Mr. Farrow?
Thank you. Good morning. Jonathan Farrow, on behalf of Adams 14. And to my left with me as well is Joseph Salazar, General Counsel for Adams 14 School District.
Thank you, Mr. Farrow. The hearing shall proceed as follows. Number one, University Preparatory Schools will have 20 minutes to present its arguments uninterrupted. I ask that the appellant not save any time for rebuttal. Adams 14 School District, number two, Adams 14 School District will have 20 minutes to present its arguments uninterrupted. Number three, State Board members will then each have 15 minutes to ask questions of the parties. Each member may use their entire 15 minutes or may reserve a portion of it and may cede any portion of their time to a fellow member. Number four, University Preparatory will then have five minutes for a closing statement. Number five, Adams 14 School District will then have five minutes for a closing statement. Number six, the State Board shall deliberate and render its decision. We can take as much time as we need for deliberation. We will adhere to the maximum time limit. Each segment will be timed. You will be notified by Ms. Maramba when you have five minutes remaining of your allotted time. Are there any questions from the local Board or Council about the state's procedures?
No, Madam Chair.
No, thank you.
Okay. All right, we will now call on University Preparatory Schools for their initial presentation. Do I need to wait for staff to begin the timing or are you ready? You may begin.
Great, thank you. Thank you, members of the State Board. This Board heard our first appeal on December 14th. You issued your order on December 20th. Within the 30-day deadline imposed by the Charter Schools Act, the Adams 14 Board took no action. On January 6th, Mr. Singer sent Adams 14 Leadership an updated charter contract. The contract was updated to reflect the new dates necessary so that U-Prep could open its school in August 2023. In that email, Mr. Singer invited the district's feedback on the updated contract in light of your order. On January 11th, Mr. Salazar replied that the district would respond within the week. Nothing happened. On January 19th, Mr. Singer followed up with Adams 14 Leadership. He reminded them of the 30-day deadline. He again invited their comments. The district did nothing. The 30-day deadline expired. Accordingly, on Monday, January 23rd, I filed the second notice of appeal. Only then did the district respond. That week, the briefing schedule was set by the State Board Office and the parties were instructed to file their respective records on appeal for Friday, January 27th. We filed ours at about 4:30 p.m. on that Friday. I then went home. Unbeknownst to me or anyone at U-Prep, the district held a special Board meeting that night on that Friday, January 27th between 5:00 and 5:30 p.m. It passed a new resolution. This new resolution essentially restated all the same arguments that they had raised in the first hearing. Then, with the brand-new resolution as its last document, it filed its record on appeal on that Friday at 6:30 p.m. or so. Clearly, the only reason that the Board held that special meeting was be able to include that new resolution in the record for this second appeal. If you watch the YouTube of that January 27th special meeting, it is reading-only. Board President Renee Lovato reads a prepared statement, which again essentially reargues the same points that were made at the first hearing. Board Secretary Maria Zubia then reads the resolution in its entirety. There is no meaningful discussion about the contract, the state's order, or anything. Nowhere in the 44 days between the first hearing on December 14th and their submitting their record on January 27th, is there any evidence that the Adams 14 Board actually considered the revised contract that we sent on January 6th? Nowhere is there any evidence that they had an open and frank discussion about whether signing the contract with U-Prep was in the best interests of Adams 14, pupils, school district, or community. There is no evidence that since the last hearing in December, the Adams 14 Board has given this matter any serious consideration whatsoever. That is not in the best interests of the pupils, the school district, and the community of Adams 14. U-Prep, however, wants to open a school in Core Commerce City. It is not deterred, and so we are back in front of you again for the second hearing. We ask that you reverse and remand with instructions that the district must conclude good-faith contract negotiations by a date certain, February 23rd. I ask you all for a date certain because I fear without it, the district will do nothing. Adams 14 is not above the law. For the good of the pupils, the school district, and the community, we ask that you order Adams 14 to complete contract negotiations in good faith by February 23rd, two weeks from today. Thank you. And now I'd like to ask Mr. Peña to address the Board.
Thank you. I am so grateful for the opportunity to share with you all. My name is Juan Peña. I come to you as a neighbor from Northeast Denver where we have our two campuses. I am also a founding Board member, so I've been a part of U-Prep with David Singer from the very, very beginning. And I'm still committed to all the promises we have made to our families in our neighborhood about what we're gonna do in helping their children achieve the highest level of education that they can, that they desire to get. I also come to you as a member of the community. I live in the same neighborhood. My kids attended U-Prep. They graduated. My last, my youngest graduated last year. And I'm also coming to you as somebody that cares for our community. I started a nonprofit in our community to help actually, I tell David all the time, he's working with the kids, I'm working with the parents. I'm working with the parents that are unemployed, unschooled, unskilled, and I'm helping them get career jobs. And we have the biggest workforce development nonprofit in the state, right in our neighborhood, serving the same parents that are going to U-Prep. So, I come to you with a commitment to families and a commitment to the community. I am also an immigrant from Colombia. I came to the United States when I was 14 years old. And education is incredibly important to me for very personal reasons. Seventy years ago, my dad in Colombia was an 11-year-old street kid that had never been to school. And a new school opened up in town, very much like a U-Prep. And my grandmother took my 11-year-old dad and said, "Would you educate my son?" And to her surprise, the principal said yes. And my dad started in kindergarten as an 11-year-old. And that decision that my grandmother made changed the trajectory of generations. I'm standing before you because of that decision my grandmother made, because of that school and the impact in Colombia that it had on my dad. My dad eventually graduated from that school, went off to college, and eventually came back and became the head of that school. So, education is incredibly important to me. I also believe that in order for us to solve very complex problems in America, part of the problem is that we don't understand the problem. And we cannot solve a problem we don't understand, and we cannot understand from a distance. So, one of the things that I did back in 2009 was leave my engineering career that I loved. And I became a truancy officer in our local school, our local elementary school. And I spent two years knocking on doors of my neighbors, talking to single moms and grandmas and dads that just came out of prison about why their kids were not in school. And for two years, through relationships, I got to really understand and actually see inside of the school all the brokenness that we have in our schools. And to me, that's unacceptable. And so, when David Singer came to me back in 2010, I think, and said, "Hey, I have a vision for a school that's gonna radically support families, that's gonna radically have high expectations of our kids, and we're going to go and even fundraise extra money if we have to, to provide the best positive education for our kids," I said, "I'm in." And I've been together with David Singer for 12 years. I'm really passionate about the school. And to be honest, I'm really excited about the opportunity to go and serve families in Adams 14 in Commerce City. I have personally, through my church, recruited families in Adams 14 that come to our church that are like, "We don't have enough for our kids." And I'm like, "Well, if you're willing to bring your kid, U-Prep will educate him." And we have dozens of those families that are core to our school, and we want to serve hundreds more, thousands over the next, you know, 10, 20 years.
She is the Dean of Operations for the hopefully new U-Prep's campus in Adams 14. And then finally, Juan Peña, he's a board member at University Prep.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hall. And then, Mr. Farrow?
Thank you. Good morning. Jonathan Farrow, on behalf of Adams 14. And to my left with me as well is Joseph Salazar, General Counsel for Adams 14 School District.
Thank you, Mr. Farrow. The hearing shall proceed as follows. Number one, university preparatory schools will have 20 minutes to present its arguments uninterrupted. I ask that the appellant not save any time for rebuttal. Adams 14 School District, number two, Adams 14 School District will have 20 minutes to present its arguments uninterrupted. Number three, state board members will then each have 15 minutes to ask questions of the parties. Each member may use their entire 15 minutes or may reserve a portion of it and may cede any portion of their time to a fellow member. Number four, university preparatory will then have five minutes for a closing statement. Number five, Adams 14 School District will then have five minutes for a closing statement. Number six, the state board shall deliberate and render its decision. We can take as much time as we need for deliberation. We will adhere to the maximum time limit. Each segment will be timed. You will be notified by Ms. Maramba when you have five minutes remaining of your allotted time. Are there any questions from the local board or council about the state's procedures?
No, Madam Chair.
No, thank you.
Okay. All right, we will now call on university preparatory schools for their initial presentation. Do I need to wait for staff to begin the timing, or are you ready? You may begin.
Great, thank you. Thank you, members of the state board. This board heard our first appeal on December 14th. You issued your order on December 20th. Within the 30-day deadline imposed by the Charter Schools Act, the Adams 14 Board took no action. On January 6th, Mr. Singer sent Adams 14 Leadership an updated charter contract. The contract was updated to reflect the new dates necessary so that U-Prep could open its school in August 2023. In that email, Mr. Singer invited the district's feedback on the updated contract in light of your order. On January 11th, Mr. Salazar replied that the district would respond within the week. Nothing happened. On January 19th, Mr. Singer followed up with Adams 14 Leadership. He reminded them of the 30-day deadline. He again invited their comments. The district did nothing. The 30-day deadline expired. Accordingly, on Monday, January 23rd, I filed the second notice of appeal. Only then did the district respond. That week, the briefing schedule was set by the State Board Office, and the parties were instructed to file their respective records on appeal for Friday, January 27th. We filed ours at about 4:30 PM on that Friday. I then went home. Unbeknownst to me or anyone at U-Prep, the district held a special board meeting that night. On that Friday, January 27th, between 5:00 and 5:30 PM, it passed a new resolution. This new resolution essentially restated all the same arguments that they had raised in the first hearing. Then, with the brand-new resolution as its last document, it filed its record on appeal on that Friday at 6:30 PM or so. Clearly, the only reason that the board held that special meeting was be able to include that new resolution in the record for this second appeal. If you watch the YouTube of that January 27th special meeting, it is reading-only. Board President Renee Lovato reads a prepared statement, which again essentially reargues the same points that were made at the first hearing. Board Secretary Maria Zubia then reads the resolution in its entirety. There is no meaningful discussion about the contract, the state's order, or anything. Nowhere in the 44 days between the first hearing on December 14th and their submitting their record on January 27th, is there any evidence that the Adams 14 Board actually considered the revised contract that we sent on January 6th? Nowhere is there any evidence that they had an open and frank discussion about whether signing the contract with U-Prep was in the best interests of Adams 14, pupils, school district, or community. There is no evidence that since the last hearing in December, the Adams 14 Board has given this matter any serious consideration whatsoever. That is not in the best interests of the pupils, the school district, and the community of Adams 14. U-Prep, however, wants to open a school in Core Commerce City. It is not deterred, and so we are back in front of you again for the second hearing. We ask that you reverse and remand with instructions that the district must conclude good-faith contract negotiations by a date certain, February 23rd. I ask you all for a date certain because I fear without it, the district will do nothing. Adams 14 is not above the law. For the good of the pupils, the school district, and the community, we ask that you order Adams 14 to complete contract negotiations in good faith by February 23rd, two weeks from today. Thank you. And now I'd like to ask Mr. Peña to address the board.
Thank you. I am so grateful for the opportunity to share with you all. My name is Juan Peña. I come to you as a neighbor from northeast Denver where we have our two campuses. I am also a founding board member, so I've been a part of U-Prep with David Singer from the very, very beginning. And I'm still committed to all the promises we have made to our families in our neighborhood about what we're going to do in helping their children achieve the highest level of education that they desire to get. I also come to you as a member of the community. I live in the same neighborhood. My kids attended U-Prep. They graduated. My youngest graduated last year. And I'm also coming to you as somebody that cares for our community. I started a nonprofit in our community to help, actually, I tell David all the time, he's working with the kids, I'm working with the parents. I'm working with the parents that are unemployed, unschooled, unskilled, and I'm helping them get career jobs. And we have the biggest workforce development nonprofit in the state, right in our neighborhood, serving the same parents that are going to U-Prep. So I come to you with a commitment to families and a commitment to the community. I am also an immigrant from Colombia. I came to the United States when I was 14 years old. And education is incredibly important to me for very personal reasons. Seventy years ago, my dad in Colombia was an 11-year-old street kid that had never been to school. And a new school opened up in town very much like a U-Prep. And my grandmother took my 11-year-old dad and said, "Would you educate my son?" And to her surprise, the principal said, "Yes." And my dad started in kindergarten as an 11-year-old. And that decision that my grandmother made changed the trajectory of generations. I'm standing before you because of that decision my grandmother made, because of that school and the impact in Colombia that it had on my dad. My dad eventually graduated from that school, went off to college, and eventually came back and became the head of that school. So, education is incredibly important to me. I also believe that in order for us to solve very complex problems in America, part of the problem is that we don't understand the problem. And we cannot solve a problem we don't understand, and we cannot understand from a distance. So one of the things that I did back in 2009 was leave my engineering career that I loved. And I became a truancy officer in our local school, our local elementary school. And I spent two years knocking on doors of my neighbors, talking to single moms and grandmas and dads that just came out of prison about why their kids were not in school. And for two years, through relationships, I got to really understand and actually see inside of the school all the brokenness that we have in our schools. And to me, that's unacceptable. And so when David Singer came to me back in 2010, I think, and said, "Hey, I have a vision for a school that's going to radically support families, that's going to radically have high expectations of our kids, and we're going to go and even fundraise extra money if we have to, to provide the best positive education for our kids," I said, "I'm in." And I've been together with David Singer for 12 years. I'm really passionate about the school. And to be honest, I'm really excited about the opportunity to go and serve families in Adams 14 in Commerce City. I have personally, through my church, recruited families in Adams 14 that come to our church that are like, "We don't have enough for our kids." And I'm like, "Well, if you're willing to bring your kid, U-Prep will educate him." And we have dozens of those families that are core to our school, and we want to serve hundreds more, thousands over the next, you know, 10, 20 years. And so for me, I am before you pleading that you would give us the opportunity to start a school. Commerce City, Adams 14 needs a type of U-Prep. We don't solve all the problems, but I know that there's tons of families that look to us as a solution for their kids. Education, and ultimately for them to get out of poverty. And so I'm here just to testify on that, and I'm happy to answer any questions later on if you have anything.
Ms. Salas?
Hi, my name is Carla Salas. And I come to you, first of all, thank you for hearing me out. I'm a first-generation Mexican-American, daughter of a single mother who immigrated here when she was just 16. And I grew up in Commerce City. I went to Adams 14 Schools, and it greatly affected my life. I'm currently working at U-Prep Arapaho to better my skills as a dean and really be able to give the families in Commerce City the things that I didn't have when I was in school. It's sometimes even emotional for me to think of my schooling back in the day. And it's one of the reasons I chose to come to U-Prep. U-Prep showed me something that I didn't experience in my life when I was in school in Adams 14, from elementary to high school. And U-Prep offers a life of opportunity to our families, which, if my mom wouldn't have fought for me the way she did and given me alternative schooling opportunities or tutoring, I wouldn't be who I am or where I am. And that breaks my heart for the families within Commerce City because I hear the same story over and over again from families that I just talked to in the supermarket. And if we can't treat our children like our children, which is one of our values, my child, at U-Prep, then what are we doing? I think back to my schooling once again, and I wasn't treated as someone's child. But at U-Prep, we strive for every child to be treated and taught and loved as if they were one of our own. We are listening to families, and they are, they are still asking us a year later, they're still with us. And they're like, "We got a yes. Why aren't we there yet? Why don't we have a school happening next year?" And they're frustrated, and I'm frustrated. And they say, "Well, was all our planning for nothing?" And I have to tell them, "No, we're still working on it. We're still trying to get you what you want." And so my role at the third campus is really to make sure that those families, if we're ever afforded to serve them, is to make sure that they are able to have that experience that we have in our current campuses in their own backyard. That they don't have to travel or pay ridiculous amounts of money to get their children to school every day. That they don't have to take two, three, four buses to get their children to school every day. Because I have families that do that all year long. And it's frustrating because their children miss school when it snows, and if we were there, they could get to us. Really, what I want to do for families is make sure that they feel loved, they feel heard, which my mom has told me was not the case when she had me in school. She was frustrated with that. Back then, she's still frustrated now, and I am grown. I'm 31 years old. So, my job would be to take care of the smallest things, making sure that the children feel welcome when you walk in the first day of school and having a name on their cubby, knowing that they belong up to, making sure that the drills are up to code, and that we get out of that building safely if we ever need to. We we've been fighting. We've been begging. And at this point, it's not even about what we want. It's about what our families want and what they're asking for and what they've been asking for. They want change. They need change, especially in Commerce City because it's been so underserved for so many years, and that's unacceptable. Thank you.
Just to emphasize the remarks from Juan and Carla, you know, on May 3rd, we're going to have a graduation party for our founding first graders, who 12 years later are graduating high school, the first graduating class from University Prep. And we're going to ensure we help fund their post-secondary education, every one of them. And on Saturday, I was taking my toddler, who's 17 months old, to the Carla Madison Rec Center, and we're swimming. And Sarah Azris, my little first grader, is 18, and she's the lead lifeguard. I said, "Sarah, you know about the upcoming party?" And she said, "Do you know about my upcoming future?" And I said, "Tell me." And she said, "I'm going to NYU and pursuing a degree in law." She's one of 43 six-year-olds who started with U-Prep and is now 18 years old, and everything we hoped and dreamed for is happening. It's real. And we wished it to be real, and we worked for it to be real, and we bled for it to be real, and we sweated, and it is real today. And every kid in our state deserves a Sarah Azris trajectory. And that's not true. It's not happening. It has never happened. We're simply one small part of a much larger solution to making sure every kid wakes up as Sarah Azris and goes, "This is what I want to do, and by the way, I have the education to do it." And the public school system served me sufficiently to put me in that position. And we're part of the public school system, and we're part of the solution. We're as committed today as we've ever been to Core Commerce City, to Adams 14, and to the families we've been working with for years now. The 700 petition signatures that said we want this school, the 140 families who signed intent-to-enroll forms, the 12 families who showed up for an entire year to design a school that made the most sense for them in their own backyard. And so despite the challenges, despite the obstacles, we take Board Member Angelica Schroeder's remarks to heart. If you put students first, then whatever the discrepancy is between the parties, you can overcome. And that's how we pursued since the December 14th hearing. That's how we continue to pursue this today. Nothing has wavered about our commitment. Nothing will waver, and we will create the next generation of Sarah Azrises through the dedication of people like Carla, who make all the difference in a child and family's life trajectory. And it is no small thing when a young lady, who is an immigrant, who is a multilingual learner, at 18 years old, is going to go to NYU with pride, confidence, and an education, and you will not stop her. You will not. So let's create more Sarah Azrises in this world and in a community that historically has not had sufficient children on that trajectory, who deeply deserve it, deeply deserve it. Thank you. Those are our remarks.
I believe you have five minutes remaining. Are you all finished?
We are all finished, yes. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now call on Adams 14 School District for their initial presentation, and I'll see if our timer is ready. Oh, you may begin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the State Board of Education, the Adams 14 Board of Education is not going to enter a charter contract with University Prep. When the board initially approved U-Prep's application and it authorized contract negotiations, it did so relying on numerous public promises that U-Prep had made to offer certain programming, namely preschool, and full-day services under a specified timeline. After U-Prep promptly began to backtrack and then engaged in months of contract negotiations, it then presented a contract that didn't match the programming and timeline that it had promised. U-Prep was informed then that its proposed contract terms were unacceptable. How did U-Prep respond? By threatening to involve this board in the contract negotiations and contact Steve Durham, who was then the vice chair of this board and still sits as a board member. The Adams 14 Board then unanimously rejected the proposed contract. It was not going to be coerced into agreeing to contract terms that were not what was promised under threat of state board intervention. We had an appeal and following remand, the Adams 14 Board reaffirmed that decision. Its reasons are thoroughly stated in its January 27th, 2023 resolution. It's contained in the supplemental record, and I hope everyone on the board has read it. It's at pages 163 to 170. The reasons are also stated in the board's answer brief that's been filed in this second appeal. And frankly, those reasons are the same as were presented to this board in the first appeal. And out of respect for everyone's time today, there's really no need to recite them all again in detail. Now, we did hear today, and we disagree very strongly, that the Adams 14 Board took no action on remand. Adams 14's board didn't take the action that U-Prep wanted it to take or in the form that it wanted it apparently to take. It did not change its position. It did not approve U-Prep's proposed contract. But it did reconsider its position, and it considered that proposed contract again. The attacks today about no open or frank communications or discussions are frankly insulting. The Adams 14 Board did give due consideration, and it again determined that ultimately it's just not going to enter into a charter contract with U-Prep for all the reasons that have already been discussed at length. It's unfortunate that U-Prep has brought another appeal and is apparently determined to try to force a charter contract on the Adams 14 School District. The Adams 14 Board has made clear it's just not going to enter a charter contract with U-Prep, and that is its right under the Colorado Constitution. The legislature struck a balance between state supervision and local control in the Charter Schools Act. We all know that was its second attempt to get that balance to pass constitutional muster. And we know that the balance it struck is only constitutional if a local school board has the ultimate say to reject a charter contract if its concerns are not resolved through negotiation. With respect, neither this board nor any court in Colorado has the authority to force a school board to sign a charter contract that it does not agree to and does not address and resolve its concerns. Any relationship between U-Prep and Adams 14 is irretrievably broken, and the parties are at a complete and utter impasse. There was an opportunity long ago to complete a contract, but U-Prep slammed the door on that, first with a bait and switch and then threatening negotiation tactics. The solution is not here, another charter appeal. U-Prep simply needs to move on. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now have up to 15 minutes for each board member to ask questions of the parties and hear responses. Again, we can reserve time or cede time to any member that might need it. And with that, I'll open up the floor to board member questions. Board members, I know that those of us who have heard this case before, which is two-thirds of this board, may have had many of our questions answered. But this is a good time to ask anything that you need to. Board members, do we have any questions at all?
I have a few questions, Madam Chair.
All right, Dr. Shuffle, and then we'll proceed with Board Member Plummer and Dr. Ascarzika. Go ahead, Dr. Shuffle.
Okay. For Adams 14, apparently there's lack of communication between December 14th and January 27th. If you're saying that there was communication, could you delineate what communication occurred?
Please go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I need clarification on the question. What communication? What communication with U-Prep? Communication amongst itself?
I'm having a hard time hearing you. I'm just saying, it sounds like there was lack of communication during the period between December 14th, which was the hearing, and January 27th. You're saying that there was communication. I'm saying, would you delineate what communication there was to try to resolve the contract?
Are you talking about communication with U-Prep or communication amongst?
With U-Prep.
We weren't required to communicate with U-Prep to resolve. Our board was required, under your order, to reconsider what was denied. And our board took that under consideration. And if you take a look at our January 10th board docs, you will see that in executive session, there is a part in there that talks about negotiations. The Charter School Act does not require us to have open or frank discussions. That's just what U-Prep wants you to believe we were supposed to do. But our board had discussions about the remand and about what the order, your order, asked Adams 14 to do, which is to reconsider. And it was reconsidered. You do have the resolution in front of you on what the final decision was of Adams 14. I will say also, Director, that in one of our communications, and I believe it's part of the record, you will see that we we did offer to U-Prep, we extended an offer to them, saying, "Hey, look, why don't give us an additional 30 days?" Because the parties need to have an understanding of each other's intent on a contract, and then that was promptly denied.
And then, for U-Prep, could you just address the steps you've taken to try to resolve this contract?
Yes, absolutely. Yes, I can. Thank you for the question. So, like I recited in my opening remarks, I touched on every communication that occurred, and I can touch on the one Mr. Salazar just mentioned, which occurred on January 23rd. The first communication was the email from Mr. Singer on January 6th saying, "Here's an updated contract. We invite dialogue to see if we can come to agreement on this contract." We heard nothing after January 6th. On January 10th, Adams 14 held a meeting. We could see that there was a meeting because they had agenda for the meeting, they had minutes. When you look at the agenda and the minutes, which are in the record for that meeting, it doesn't mention the state board, it doesn't mention U-Prep, it doesn't mention anything. Yes, it is true, like Mr. Salazar just said, that there was an executive session related to, quote, "negotiations." We don't know what that is. There's no evidence that they talked about the state board order or negotiations with us or the contract that we sent on January 6th. There's no evidence of that. Maybe they did. Mr. Salazar just represented that they did. But on January 11th, we do have Mr. Salazar's email where he responds in two sentences, essentially saying, "We'll get back to you within the week." Doesn't talk about that they talked about anything on January 10th, the day before. Doesn't talk about what those discussions might be. Doesn't talk about whether they have any concerns with the contractor or anything. He just says essentially, "We'll get back to you within the week." Again, that's the week of January 10th, which was a Tuesday. The 11th was a Wednesday. We don't hear anything else. We don't hear anything else. Till January 19th, Mr. Singer reaches out again, this is at the end of the 30-day timeframe, and says, "The 30-day timeframe is about to run. We would like to hear from you. We sent you the contract back on January 6th." And Mr. Salazar follows up with a very short email later that day, January 19th, just saying, "We're still taking input." I mean, nothing more than that. Again, no reference to, "Oh, we talked about this on January 10th," or "The board is having discussions or anything." Just, "We're still taking input." Again, very short, the email's in the record. So that's January 19th, that email exchange. Nothing more. So now the 30-day deadline has passed because it ran on January 20th, or January 19th, if you want to be precise. But we gave until January 20th. Nothing happened. That's a Friday. So then, from our perspective, we don't see any evidence that the contract has been discussed. So then, we say, "Well, we want to open this school. We need to go back to the state board." So I filed the second notice of appeal on that Monday, January 23rd. And that is when Mr. Salazar emails me like he just said. So it's on January 23rd, that Monday, when he then writes me and says, "This second appeal comes as a shock, and we think it's coercive. And would you give us 30 more days?" And I respond later that day saying, "No, we will not." The Charter Schools Act has a 30-day deadline for the local board to take action after the state board makes its first determination. And we want to open this school. So I say, "No, we're not going to give you another 30 days." Because from our perspective, we have no reason to believe that another 30 days is going to bring them to the table and have them negotiate in good faith. We have no reason to believe that. And now they're telling you, both today and in their answer brief, there's no way we're giving U-Prep a charter contract. Now, in Mr. Farrow's remarks about they don't have to, that's the first half of my reply brief. I hope you all had an opportunity to read my reply brief. They're just legally incorrect on what they continue to put forward as we have the statutory and constitutional right to not enter a contract. That is incorrect, like I tried to explain at some length from the Booth case. Like, it's also true in the other cases. For instance, they cite the Owens case. The sentence after the one in the Owens case that they refer to, the Colorado Supreme Court talks about how then the district and the charter school will resolve the issues in order to reach a contract. So the law is clear that Adams 14 is just legally incorrect if they think they can choose to not enter a contract after approving an application, which is why we're here again today. And so, again, we respectfully ask you to play your role and reverse and remand because what they have done is not in the best interest of the pupil, students, or community. what they have done is not interest, in the best interest of the pupil, students, or community. And give them a date certain, saying you need to finish your obligations to negotiate a contract with the school in good faith and come to a resolution by February 23rd, I think is a fair date that's close enough so that we can still open our school by August 2023.
Okay. Thank you so much. I think that's all my questions for now, but I may return with additional questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Shuffel. Board Member Plummer.
Thank you all. It's nice to be here and see you all. This is my first bite at the apple. I was present for the December 14th hearing, so I did hear the arguments, but I have several questions for both parties. I may run out of time and may ask for time for others. I don't know how long this is going to take, but I have questions for each party. I'll just start with U-Prep and would love a update on how the process is going to get certifications from CDE and the Department of Health and Human Services for the preschool. How is the preschool process going?
Thanks for asking. You can't receive your temporary license until you finalize your facility because you start with the address of the location of which the pre-K will be operating. We can't finalize the facility contract till we have a contract with the district. And so, it is in a stalled moment. Granted, we believe it can be done in a fairly quick pathway, and actually just talked to Lisa White recently on this issue, who's obviously leading the entire department. So we're excited by that. We're excited by our early literacy, sorry, our early education leadership that we have on this project. We know we can move very fast once we sign the lease agreement. I think the challenge at this point is the renovations necessary on the facility, including the doors to the exterior, the updated plumbing for toilets, et cetera, from the facility that we've identified. I know the facility discussion was very much part of the December 14th hearing that you got to listen in on. But we are excited that we have a lease agreement ready to go. We can't sign that lease agreement without a contract, knowing that the school has permanence in the district partnership, and then can't start renovations. So, the very tricky thing is while we've talked to the licensed specialists for the Commerce City Community or licensed specialists for ECE are designated to geographies, the key starting point is the location, the address. And we can't write that address in until we have that lease signed, we can't have that lease signed until we have a contract. So I would say we were in a stalled pattern that we had hoped would have kicked off no later than July 1st with an expected contract signing on June 30th, 2022, and here we are now in February of 2023. So I wish I could have said it's done, and it's not yet done.
But you do have a site?
Yes.
That you've identified?
Yeah, we actually have a draft lease agreement with that site that we've identified that could permanently house early childhood education, up to four classrooms, three and four-year-olds, that would honor the exact promise that Mr. Farrow claims we have decommitted to, which is not the case whatsoever.
Okay. And then, given the challenges with preschool, you know, that the system changed, why was it part of your initial application to offer preschool in your first go-around? So if, given the challenges, was it not possible to submit your application without offering preschool in the beginning?
I think that would have been possible. I think, just to be clear, it's what we heard the wants and needs were of the family. It's also we heard the wants and needs of the district. We spent a good bit of time talking to their chief academic officer, Sheila Burke, in even the application process before we submitted in September 2021. We spent a year talking to families of local communities that we need high-quality pre-K seats, we need tuition-free pre-K seats, we have a working-class community, we need an excellent place for our children to start their education. Simultaneously, I'd say the momentum towards pre-K, thank God, universal pre-K has kicked off, I mean, and we're getting 10, 15 hours a week, I know we're going to do more and more and more as a state going forward, but the momentum and the positive energy and everything happening, it felt, it felt like a no-brainer to listen to families, build a pre-K program, ensure we found a facility that could house a preschool program. And while that's a new aspect to U-Prep and not one we've had in our current Denver sites, our entire premise of this new school is to honor the wants and needs of the local community. Local community from a parent lens, which we think is the definition of local community, right, families and parents, and then actually the district. And then from a research side, if you look at Adams County as a whole, it was Adams 14's part of Adams County, the dearth of not only preschool seats, but quality preschool seats. So you look at Colorado Shines ratings, the lack of three, four, and five ratings is significant. So you have a problem with volume and you have a problem with quality. And we felt we could be, again, you know, U-Prep opens its schools to be part of a solution. So it felt like a no-brainer to commit to it and then deliver on it. The trickery is the pathway to get to it requires facility first. Facility first requires a charter contract.
I guess where I'm getting with my question is, we, I think we all agree that there should be a preschool, and I think where the 14 complaint or claims are is that if it wasn't really possible to do because of the, that there's a lot that goes into it, the timing does matter to them. And I'm just going to leave it there because I have other questions for 14 on how this has gone down because there's things that I have questions about there. So I'm going to move and ask Adams 14 some questions because on March 8th, U-Prep came forward and asked at a board meeting to extend contract negotiations until June. It was approved by a 4-0 vote that you would continue contract negotiations. At that point, it's pretty obvious that nobody can open a preschool by fall. If you're going to extend contract negotiations till June, you're not going to be able to open a preschool by the following fall. So why at that point did not Adams 14 just declare that this condition was too important and that you are not going to continue with the negotiations?
Thank you, Board Member Plummer. I, we, I tried to answer a similar question at the last appeal, and I'll reiterate. I believe that that wasn't a clear outcome to the Adams 14 Board of Education. It appears that U-Prep reached a handshake, informal agreement with the district's former external manager, MGT, without the Board of Education's involvement or approval. I don't believe that the board understood at that point in time, when they agreed to extend the negotiations, as you point out, that that necessarily meant that the timeline of that promise of opening that fall with preschool was not going to happen. If that had been the case, then perhaps, as you said, why didn't this happen? Then it very well may have happened at that point in time. But I don't think that was clear at all. And again, we had a lot of argument about that at the last, at the last meeting, and all I can tell you as counsel for the Adams 14 Board is, I just believe that that's the case. U-Prep may have realized that, but, you know, even, even as negotiations were getting, proceeding after that point in time, there was still this, you know, carrot of, oh, but we, you know, we can still, we're still going to be able to try to do it. But the issue became at that point that the commitment backed off. And, and, you know, Mr. Singer said, "Well, we haven't decommitted from that commitment or that promise." Well, you know, what really talks in this situation is the contract language. And the proposed contract language that U-Prep insisted on made it so that they didn't have to offer preschool at opening. In other words, they could open without preschool at no penalty in year one. And that just wasn't what was presented, it wasn't what was approved, and that is ultimately a key reason why, before the first appeal, that, you know, this became a major impasse between the parties. And of course, you know, then you talk about, well, okay, you know, things happen. And again, we hear today this, oh, we're going to, it's really the district's fault that, you know, we don't have a preschool license yet because it's all about location and you got to have a lease, you got to have a contract and all that. And again, I'm sorry, I think that U-Prep knew when they started negotiations and proposed, proposed to extend the negotiation period, I think they understood that it was very likely, as you said, that preschool was going to be in jeopardy at opening. Again, the Adams 14 Board, I don't believe, appreciated that.
May I respond?
I just have to follow up with another question because I'm, I want to.
Okay. Yep. Sorry.
So I'm looking at the timeline that says March 10th enrollment lottery, this is, this is the U-Prep timeline, and the agreement to continue contract negotiations was March 8th. In the timeline, March 10, 2022, there's lots of timelines that cannot be met if you're going to negotiate during that time. And this is your stipulation that you said that you are holding U-Prep to. So the Adams 14 should have been informed by you all about what it meant. I'm not understanding how there could not have been communication about if you're going to extend the contract negotiations, what that's going to do to the opening of the preschool and why that's, why we're having, why we're not understanding that. I'm just trying to figure that out. No questions for the 14?
That's for them.
That's for them. Yep, I want to understand why, why, why your board didn't understand the implications.
Well, I think a couple of things, and it's, it's clear on the record. In September, they're the ones who made these proposals. That's their timeline. That's not ours, right? So they made the proposal. And under that premise, the board, well, they approved the charter contract. We didn't ask them to change it afterwards, or the application, sorry, the application. We didn't ask them to change it. They met with MGT on January 10th, and they unilaterally changed it on their own and didn't tell the board. So the board is moving along, thinking that they're going to meet this timeline. This isn't the timeline for the negotiation. This is their timeline for getting, you know, the students to apply and to do all the things that they're preparing for, for 2022. That's how the board is looking at this. They didn't come back to the board after January 10th and say, hey, look, we can't do this. They didn't ask for a different resolution. They didn't do any of those things. They're bumping along in the dark, not alerting the community that we're not going to meet our timelines. So then March comes along, and they say, hey, we need to extend contract negotiations. Board says, okay, let's go ahead and extend the contract negotiations for another, I think it was another 30 days or whatever it was, it was June. Not even then was there like, hey, we're not going to meet our timelines, oh, and by the way, we're not going to be able to open up pre-K. Oh, and by the way, we need you to approve this contract before we can get a building or a facility. Because take a look at their application. I pointed it out to you, it's plain as day. They didn't say in there, the only way that we're going to be able to get a facility is if we get a contract. They said very clearly that they had the funds to get the facility. In the mind of the Adams 14 Board, they're not sitting there saying, oh, my goodness, we better help them out. They're saying, we don't need your help, we can do this on our own. So, comes as a shock that in June, all of these things start popping up, right? We're not going to be able to open up pre-K now. We want to put a new contract, or a new term in this contract that says that we can't open up pre-K. Oh, and by the way, we know the promises that we made to you and that you relied on when you made your resolution in December that says that we're going to open up a pre-K? Well, we're going to take that off the table, not only from the board, but from the community. That's not good-faith negotiation. They keep talking about good-faith negotiation, but they don't want to talk about those facts because those are really steamy facts for them, just like the same facts are that right afterwards, the threat about Steve Durham, that's not good-faith negotiation.
I've been told I have two minutes, so I'll just hold them and I'll let other people go back, and then people can decide if they have any more they want to give me later. Thank you. I appreciate that.
May I respond or not?
I have, I'm going to keep running your. Oh, I, sorry.
No, that's good.
Okay, I think the next person I had in line to speak was Dr. Asgarcak.
Don't start until I get my own time. You're one, two, three. Okay, so I'm sorry, I'm getting clearer picture each time. This is very helpful, actually, to hear some of.
To hear some of the reiteration of some of the past things, I think it's particularly important for new board members to hear. I have questions. I want to actually take you, some curiosity questions, way back to the initial approval of this charter contract. It was a 3-2 vote. Are any of the members that voted for the charter still on this, on the Board of Education for 14? Just?
Yes, and as a matter of fact, our board president was vice president at the time, and she voted in favor of it.
Okay, good.
And she's present.
And she is present as well, good. Can you help me understand the timing of MGT? It's been brought up twice now, and it's in the record, and you have brought it up as well. I'm trying to figure out, I'm hearing more about it. Where was their involvement in the approval of this? Help me understand a little bit.
So literally, less than a month after the resolution from the Adams 14 Board, saying that this is going to open up in 2022 with pre-K 3 and 4, they had a meeting with MGT on January 10th. And this is shortly after, this was shortly before, I think we, we made the, Adams 14 Board made the motion to terminate that contract, I believe it was on the 11th, on January 11th. And, but on the 10th, without going to the board, without having any authority to do so, MGT told them, just go ahead and extend this out for you. And that was never presented to the board. There's no resolution on it. So that's how that took place.
Okay. So MGT's involvement then with the district ended January 11th?
That's when we notified them that the contract would be terminated, but they were finally out on February the 4th.
All right. So the individuals that were negotiating were district employees, the ones that were presenting here last time? Right. And then they would have been working with the superintendent, or they would have been working with the district? It wasn't MGT negotiating a contract after the 10th? Is that correct?
That's correct. There was concern, though. They knew that they didn't have authority to agree to anything. But there was concern about, well, what role does MGT play in this? Because if this board remembers, that MGT kept using the hammer, that they were the ones who were going to make decisions for the district, and your board order frankly made things a little unclear. And so with MGT saying, you all are going to get an extension of time to do X, Y, and Z, sure, district personnel was left in a little bit of confusion, like, what do we do now, right? But one thing is certain, is that MGT never notified the board about this extension. They didn't notify the board about this extension, and our personnel never agreed to any extension, but they did bump along to try to, in good faith, negotiate a contract.
On your reply, reply, reply brief, page 2, this has come up many times, and I'm trying to get some clarification here, about promises that U-Prep made, and it included, in the list that's in the reply brief, it includes dual-language component, SEL, full-day offerings, serving students with special needs, capping enrollment at 16 students per classroom. The rest has to do with pretty much preschool. What is it, where is that promise in the documentation? So like, just for instance, the dual-language component, I never saw it in their application. And what the board approved was not a dual-language program. So I'm, where, can you tell me where these promises are, maybe just for the record? Because it's noted many times and I just couldn't.
It's in the charter application itself. We took it chapter and verse, and we'll get the pages for you right now.
Okay. Okay. So while he's looking.
It's, yeah, so this, this is actually, because this is the second appeal, the first record seems to have transferred over to, and then we just did a supplemental record?
Yes.
It's in the record of the first appeal, and it's Adams 14, pages 12, 13, 15, and 16. And then it goes down to their stability, and you'll see Adams 14, pages 122, 175 through 177, 181 through 185, 233 through 244. This is their application, that's where we got the language.
Mr. Singer, would you like to respond to my question, too?
Yeah. I wrote every page of that document with the families in the community and with our founding leadership, including Carla, to my right? And we talked about having, very explicitly, bilingual components that honor the native language of the students joining the school, which is very different than a dual-language program. We talked about 16 kids as a cap to, for the ECE program to ensure we can be part of CE cap, which has an enrollment cap on ECE. You can't have more than 16 kids and receive CE cap funding. Of course, there's an SEL component and a whole child component to the school's design. And so they've taken what is 300-page document and bolded it into four things that without And so they've taken what is 300-page document and bolded it into four things that without context are actually somewhat inaccurate in their read. It is not a proposed dual language school. It is a school that involves bilingual programming, including having Spanish languages core content, both for native and non-native speakers, having bilingual staff members and a number of other components that would support and honor the heritage and language of the families and children attending the school, which is exactly what parents ask for.
And what is the full day offering at no cost to families?
That component is all tied to, you'd see in every preschool program, which is when you have a community with many families from low income backgrounds qualifying for full day tuition free kindergarten, or sorry, preschool. We would offer that and then as needed, and one could speak to this supplement as a board and through fundraising to make sure that any family would qualify, right? Certainly a family making $150,000 a year is not going to qualify for full day tuition free pre-K.
Maybe that's a better, easier question.
Yeah.
So is it, are you asserting that you actually in your contract do meet all of these promises they have listed?
Yes, and I would, I would argue very clearly, which is counter to what I heard to my left, that we started our negotiation conversations with Adams 14 senior leadership to say, we're going to need more time to get this right and to make sure we're calibrated, that if it's going to be the first in district charter school with this board and with this senior leaders, we have to be on the same page. We hired an external third-party facilitator to make sure we could do the time. This, this was very serious work, over 50 hours in three months and 21 in-person meetings. This was not happenstance or random. It was incredible effort to make sure we had a contract written collaboratively that everyone could agree to. Part of that conversation was the what-if scenarios that occur when something doesn't open on time or performance metrics aren't met, which is a very normal component of a contract. That has to be delineated from non-commitment to promise. We didn't move away from doing the preschool. We didn't move away from the bilingual components. We didn't move away from the SEL programming. Every promise made in the application, which serves as the basis for what the contract will be. A charter application, right, it's not a contract, it's the basis.
I'm going to cut you off because my timing, sorry.
Sorry, I apologize. Thank you.
But I would say though, that in the initial contract that we did see, it did appear as if the school was moving away. It did leave a lot of room around, you may not even have to open a preschool again. Now, the contract I just saw that you submitted did have, the last draft you submitted in January, did say that you committed to a year, in one year, the opening of that preschool. I didn't love the language that said, and it may constitute a breach, I would have preferred to see, and it would constitute, but whatever.
Which we'd be open to in discussion.
But it was in there, I did see that.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I'm good for now, I want to stop and save my time. Eight minutes, 33 seconds, ma'am? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Skarsak. I have some questions as well, but I'm happy to let others go first if you would like to. Are there board members who are waiting to ask a question? Okay, Dr. Scheffel or, Dr. Scheffel has had a pass already. Mr. Durham, do you have any questions that you'd like to ask at this time?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay.
I'd like to ask Ms. Burkey.
Ms. Burkey's not here.
Yes. Does every board in the state of Colorado have to notice a meeting and then call that meeting properly to order and then vote to go into executive session?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Thank you for the question, Mr. Durham. In order to notice a meeting, a special meeting, you would need 24 hours' notice. You would need to indicate if you're going to an executive session, what the grounds for executive session under the statute would be, as well as, as much information as you can provide about the context of the executive session. Then you would, at least for local boards, you would go into the meeting and you would vote to go into executive session, you'd need a majority.
And then to take official action, you'd have to come out of the executive session properly and then vote in public forum for the, whatever resolution, is that correct?
Correct.
Is there, what is the evidence of the proper 24-hour notice for this meeting being given? Is there evidence of that?
I apologize, I have not reviewed what the evidence would be.
I know our staff usually monitors all communications from Adams 14 and any of them see a notice of a meeting 24 hours in advance of the meeting where this contract was rejected?
Not that I'm aware of.
Well, let me ask Mr. Salazar, was there a 24-hour notice properly given through the properly chan, through the proper channels?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
There's always 24 hours' notice given through the proper channels on board docs.
So everyone managed to miss the board docs' notice, is that? Our staff missed that notice, is that correct?
I can't speculate as to what people do during a given day, but if they missed it, they missed it. But we provided 24-hour notice as required by law.
And then the meeting was called to order? And I presume there's a, a video of this or a tape or something?
Yes, sir, there is. There's a video of us calling, well, of the, of the, of roll call and then the board then taking a roll call vote to go into executive session. And then afterwards, the board, the board reconvening on January 10th to engage in their business.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Are you, let me ask this, who else is there from the district? Not being in the room, it's a little more.
We have Mr. Salazar and Mr. Farrow here from the district, or on behalf of the district.
So, so no, no district employees?
We do, the superintendent is here, as well as the chair of our, the president of our board.
Okay, thank you. I'll reserve the rest of my time, Madam Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Durham. So I want to make sure that I'm being transparent with respect to my rationale and my thinking. And I think to that end, I'm going to try my best to hit some of the high points that I touched upon in the prior hearing. But in case I miss something, I just want to say for the record that my thinking in the last hearing still is of value with respect to the conclusion I reached today. And I hope that anyone reviewing this matter today might make reference to the prior hearing as well. There is one point that I know I expressed some consternation about in the last hearing and that was that I was hearing loud and clear from the district that preschool from University Prep was something that was of such a high value that the absence of it represented a non-starter for you. Given that our decisions must be based on the best interests of students, the district, and the community, I'm at a loss to understand how the possibility of a delay in receiving something that is that important to you is a justification for denying something you otherwise find to be of value to students of any grade who might otherwise benefit from it. And I just want to give you another opportunity to speak to that point. Even if we believed that it was possible that preschool might be delayed by a year, and I'm not suggesting that that's my belief, but even if one were to, for the sake of argument, believe that the preschool might be delayed by a year, how is blocking all students who might benefit from U-Prep entirely? How does that express how much you value having U-Prep bring in their quality academic offerings? Can you please help me understand that?
Sure.
Madam Chair, I, it should not be lost upon this board that they made these promises in September to the community. It wasn't just to the Adams 14 board. They had numerous meetings with community from the time they submitted their application in September until the board vote on December 14th to approve the charter application. During that time, they made these promises, boosted up the community about what they were going to do and what they were going to offer. Adams 14 relying on those, that, that, those proposals, agreed to approve the charter application. To be clear, this, this proceeding here isn't about a charter application. It was approved. And the basis of which was going to form the contract. And that basis was, we're going to open pre-K 3 and 4 in 2022. They then shifted on community without letting community know, without coming back after their January 10th meeting with MGT and sitting down with community and saying, we can't do this. We're going to have to extend it out by a year to get community feedback. They didn't do any of those things. We had to do that after they provided us the proposed contract in June. And then the threat comes. So ask yourself this question, you put yourself in our shoes. We want pre-K 3 and 4 for our students because it's important. They can't provide it now at the timeline that they said they can provide it. They can't even provide it now in the proposed contract. They're saying, we may not be even, be able to provide it even in the first year. Might be able to in the second year, but we don't know that either, right? So community is left in a lurch. And all those parents from last year who had two-year-olds, three-year-olds, who might have benefited from this pre-K 3 and 4 offered by U-Prep, they're not going to benefit from it now because it's gone, right? That's the point, is that when you negotiate with a party, you do so and you incorporate those promises into your agreement. And then if you're going to shift course, you need to let everybody know about that. And that's not what happened here. So you're asking us the question, how is it not in the best interest to have U-Prep in our district? It's because it was a bait and switch that they pulled on the community without any transparency of saying, we're now switching gears on you. And we, as a school board, under our constitutional statutory powers to negotiate contracts, said, we cannot put our community through a situation where we have a partner who is not negotiating in good faith and going to adhere to their promises that they gave to our community. That is our power to be able to do that.
Mr. Salazar, I won't presume to speak on behalf of University Prep, but even if we assume that there was any obstacle with respect to providing pre-K, would the decision on the part of the district not still have left other parents in the lurch who wanted to benefit from this high-quality provider?
Madam Chair, I, I think that it's important to recognize that this is really just the beginning of the process, right? Because after you sign a contract and a charter school opens, it begins a, what I think both sides are hopeful is going to be a long, productive, successful relationship. So it's not like, you know, you go and buy a car, sign a, sign a contract and then find out that, you know, you got bait and switched on a lease term and your rates double as high as you thought and you go and you complain and, you know, oh, they fix it for you, but you're never going to go back there because you can take your car somewhere else and you can buy someone somewhere else. This is about the kids, it's not about a car. And so the bait and switch is really important because this district has to be able to be an authorizer. This board has to be an authorizer moving forward. And we can't take for granted that University Prep is just going to do everything right and they're going to have a good school and the kids are going to be served well. I mean, we heard some stories today and, and intention and that's great, but we can't take that for granted. The district has to be the authorizer. It's not this board's job to hold University Prep accountable for when they open and what they do, that's Adams 14's job. And see, when, when the charter has blown up all trust through these tactics, how is it that Adams 14 can be a quality authorizer? Because, hey, you know, if you don't, if U-Prep doesn't like something, then they're just going to call, they're just going to call you and you and all the other members of the state board. They're just going to, you know, create more state problems for Adams 14 because, my gosh, this, we're already being monitored. Every communication is being monitored, we heard that today, I can't believe that.
Mr. Farrow?
It's, it's really, you can't proceed that way. That's how it's viewed in Adams 14 and I think that's entirely understandable and reasonable.
Mr. Farrow, you, you mentioned that this is only the, the beginning, but for a student who was hoping to attend University Prep, for some of those families, it may be feeling like the end because the frustration and the delays are in effect denying them the opportunity. I want to give University Prep an opportunity to speak to some of the concerns that I've raised and I would appreciate that, thank you.
I think Mr. Hawkins speaks to, to many elements of the charter contract and timeline and agreements with the district and senior leadership. One thing I want to name very directly on the record is, there was zero bait and switch. Carla personally, in English and Spanish, called every family filled an intention roll form about the timeline and the delays that would occur to do this right in partnership with the district and what it would then take to have a contract in which we all agreed upon. So this idea that we didn't communicate with the community, I'm curious what the definition of community is because to go to every other homes of the families who were formed and championing the new school and communicate with them honestly and directly about the timelines that could happen around the preschool opening, even the kindergarten opening. Hey, we got this approved in December, we're starting contract negotiations. If those don't get done till June, it's very hard to open a school in August. So there is a world where you might open in fall of 2023 and we want you to know that, we want to be transparent about it and we want to keep your trust. And we actually had every one of those calls and in-person conversations in English and Spanish with all of the families who have been part of this journey with us since the beginning. So to say that community hasn't been part of the conversation or that there's been a bait and switch is simply false, depending on how you decided to define community. Because we define community as families, children.
And let me pick up on the legal side if I may, because there was no bait and switch on the legal side either. The references to this January 10th conversation, yes, in, in January of 2022, U-Prep and Adams 14 started to communicate. It was U-Prep leaders with Adams 14 leaders, senior leadership. Yeah, MGT was part of the January 10th conversation, but they were about to go away. Adams 14 senior leaders were in that conversation too. And then go back and read my opening brief for the first appeal. It, it details in, in very carefully citing to the record every time, the long history of January to June and the collaborative discussions between senior leadership, Mario Marquez, Sheila Burke, the senior leadership from Adams 14, working with Mr. Singer and other senior leaders from U-Prep, to jointly create a contract which included having the date of the school opening extended to August 2023, which the Adams 14 board expressly acknowledged in their March 8th meeting. And like I said in my reply brief and again repeated, you can go look at that March 8th meeting from 2022 and you can watch the board and the board president acknowledge the fact that the, that U-Prep school is going to open in 2023. There was no objection at that board meeting on March 8th. They moved forward and voted on the resolution at, at hand, which was essentially acknowledging and recognizing that that was going to be understood and approved. There's also, in, again, my opening brief, I detail the 10 different meetings between Adams 14 senior leadership and the Adams 14 board. I, I referenced the fact that Adams 14 senior leadership came to a May board meeting at U-Prep where there's extensive discussions about how the school's going to open in 2023. So Adams 14 senior leadership was clearly, clearly there. They then go back and meet with the Adams 14 board, so I have to presume that they are telling the board about that. In those May conversations, we hear from the Adams 14 senior leadership, like Mr. Marquez, oh, the Adams 14 board is expressing certain desires about how the contract is going to be written. So clearly the Adams 14 board knows about the negotiations, is, has been informed about the negotiations. So this is not, as Mr. Salazar tries to characterize it, as if the Adams 14 board was somehow in the dark and, and, and then it was sprung on them in June, which then they had to object to. That's just not the case at all and the written record shows that very, very clearly.
I want to ask, do you have families that are still hoping to attend, have their children attend the University Prep program? And can you speak to the way that these delays have impacted the families that are hoping to attend a University Prep school in Adams 14?
Yeah, I've actually been able to create a relationship with a lot of these families and so they are still hoping, they're still telling me, well, if my daughter isn't in kindergarten, my granddaughter is going to be, or preschool. And so they have family that they are still hoping to be able to have come and join us at U-Prep so that they can benefit from what we have been able to offer our, our kindergartners, but now in preschool. But then they have situations that come up where they're like, well, it's been delayed so long and I've been waiting, I actually don't know where to send my child, my granddaughter, my grandson. I'm at a loss. I'm at a loss. I might move, I might move out of Commerce City because there is not the options that I'm looking for."
Thank you, and I want to give the district a chance to speak to that. To families that were hoping to enroll their children in University Prep, what does, how was the district meeting those families' needs?
Well, you know, and the board knows this. Universal pre-K is going to be offered. So, we will have that in the district. That's not speculative when it's going to be offered, it's being offered. And, you know, we have our own pre-K programs at our various schools. So, we're meeting our community's needs now. You know, the last witness who just spoke, all this stuff is not in the record before you. This is now, you know, hearsay, which you may or may not consider. But the fact is that none of this has been presented in the record. Any phone calls, any conversations with students or parents, none of these things. So, you know, take it for what it's worth. But, you know, our district is still moving forward with providing our students pre-K. And now it's being bolstered with the state universal pre-K program. And that's how we're, it's not as if our students are not being serviced. They are being serviced. And I guess the last thought being is that, Madam Chair, this isn't about a charter application. It was approved. I think we all know that. It was approved. This is about contract negotiations.
I've got only one minute left, so I apologize for interrupting. But if it is approved but frustrated in its ability to move forward and actually come to fruition, how is that an approval?
Because that's how the law separates it. The law separates it between a charter application and a contract. And the Supreme Court has said very clearly, those two things are very separate.
So, you can approve it and then never let them open?
We can approve it based off of the terms of the charter application. And those terms were opening up pre-K three and four in August of 2022.
I apologize, my time is up. And I want to make sure I'm being even-handed with all board members.
You can have my time.
Thank you. Oh, all right. If you want to finish your answer, then go ahead.
Yes, so that, we followed the law. We approved their charter application as presented to us on December 14th of 2022 under those terms. And then it goes, it shifts into a different gear, which is not in statute where the state board can interfere in contract negotiations. We switched over to contract negotiations. And that's where, I guess, the wheels of the bus fell off, right? Where they're saying, "Well, now we're not going to be able to meet those terms that we gave you in the approved charter application. We're not going to be able to meet our timelines. Oh, and by the way, if you don't approve our proposed contract, now we're going to involve Mr. Durham." Right? And so, we have that right to say, "You're not going to do that to us." And no, we're not going to approve your contract.
Okay, I appreciate your candor on that. Is it all right for me to use a little bit of your time, Dr. Schroeder, to allow the applicant to answer on the same point? Do you want to speak to the same point, please?
Yes, absolutely. So, your order from December 20th very clearly lays out the law in this area. It clearly indicates what a district may do and what a district may not do. And in that order, it states the three routes that a district under statute and the constitution, as interpreted by our color Supreme Court, may take. And one of them is not, what Mr. Salazar continues to repeat, which is approve the application but not finish contract negotiations. Again, you can, it's, I think, on one page of your order where it talks about you, a district could not approve the application, a district could unilaterally impose a different contract, say, "We're not going to approve this contract that you're proposing, but we're going to propose this contract that you must agree to." And then if a district does that, then a charter applicant can appeal to this board and this board can then make its own decision about, based upon that contract, whether it's in the best interest of the students, the school district, and the community. And then, as Booth very clearly says, it can override, it can supersede the judgment of the local district, because that's your role under the Charter Schools Act, and send it back and say reconsider. And at that point, legally, the school district then has an obligation to, again, enter into contract negotiations, to finish the contract negotiations. Mr. Salazar is right in one small respect, which is Booth didn't say explicitly that a district could not enter a contract or the state board could order the district to enter a contract. But what Booth did say very clearly is that it needed to finish the contract negotiations in good faith to reach an agreement. That was always the understanding of the court in that case and in other cases. So, again, they're just legally incorrect. And why, in part, Madam Chair, goes to your question, right? To be, to have it the other way would frustrate the ability of a charter school to open and it would leave them no recourse because every authorizer could approve an application and then just say, "We're not going to approve that contract" and sit back and do nothing and then charter schools couldn't open. And that's not the way the system is designed.
May I comment on that, Madam Chair, briefly?
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Briefly, Mr. Faro.
Thank you very much. I think that's a very self-serving view of a very interesting, complicated legal question that cuts to the core of our system in Colorado. The system of districts having local control and the system of the state having general supervision. And Booth was a difficult, difficult case. And I don't know that we've ever had a situation. I think, you know, everybody involved in education hopes that a charter and a district are going to be able to work out a contract. I don't know that we've ever had the case like this where we just have an impasse. Because, see, what Mr. Hall is really arguing today, and this cuts to the core of the question that Board Member Scarsica raised, I think, last time, saying, "Wow, this is a really difficult policy issue." And what happens? What happens? Well, maybe we're going to find out. Because, see, Mr. Hall is saying that the district has to cave. And that's what this board said on the first appeal. "Adams 14, we think you ought to cave." Well, you know what? They don't think they should cave on this issue. They don't. And they have a lot of reasons for it, we've been over a ad nauseam. So, now we're getting into, "Well, all right, what about the legal issue here? Can Adams 14 be the party that's forced to cave?" I mean, U-Prep keeps saying, "Oh, yeah, absolutely." Well, the Charter Schools Act gives them the right to appeal in a unilateral condition. But what is the district's remedy? The district is the one that has a constitutional entitlement here, not the charter applicant. The charter applicant's rights that they have are in the statute. The statute has to be constitutional. And the limit of it is, as Mr. Salazar said earlier, the limit of it is approval of an application versus the contract negotiations. And yeah, everybody hopes that you're going to reach an agreement. But if you don't, who, can the district be forced? Our position is absolutely not. That's not to say, I'm not commenting on a situation that you seem to be suggesting. And I think it's important, let's call it out. You seem to be suggesting that really what's going on here is, and I think U-Prep said it last time, they accused us of a bait and switch. They never had any intention of, "Well, that's just not true. I don't believe that the case." And that is not what the record is here and that's not what this case is about. This case is about legitimate, bona fide. I mean, there's a difference of opinion, obviously, but defensible reasons for not completing a contract. And constitutionally, can the district be forced to be the party that caves? I mean, I think Board Member Scarsa is right that this needs to be resolved in that, in the building on the Hill there. That's where it needs to be resolved. But if it has to be resolved in the courts, then so be it. Because the district is indicated, it is not going to cave.
I'll ask one more question and then I'll stop my questioning. But I just want to ask, University Prep, was your conduct within the contract negotiations consistent with what you presented in the application that was approved?
I would argue that the contract negotiations between U-Prep and Adams 14 were best practice, were actually the best version of good-faith negotiations you can imagine. A 14 is in a challenged circumstance with the state. We sit down with folks like Mario Marquez and other leaders in the district and say, "This is going to take longer if we're going to do it right." And I remember this direct conversation. "If we're going to do this right, let's take time so that we are truly in line and in sync. Your board has not overseen an in-district public charter school before. This is very new information. We've never operated outside of Denver, this is new for us too. Let's have a third-party facilitator, let's do it right. Let's go over every detail." And every one of those meetings was productive. I would say, when it was challenged, it was still positive because we all committed to the CACSA standards for the contract template. And everyone was honest and at the table and having really meaningful dialogue and ultimately produced, I'd say, a contract that is bar none against any charter contract you'd see in the state. And that was a beautiful moment. And we didn't delay that as a tactic. We delayed it to make sure it was a true partnership, which I think is a powerful rationale for why to ensure there was enough time and space. And when we delayed further in March, that was an email from Mario Marquez of the district saying, "We're not meeting the 90-day statute to achieve the contract. Let's extend. U-Prep, would you agree to that extension?" "Yes, because it's in the best interest of the partnership." And there's an email exchange in March of 2022 on that front. And then, even after December 14th and the December 20th hearing, we're still, the orders are on December 20th. We still come to the table and say, "Let's figure this out. Let's have a conversation. What is, what is the concern? If the concern is pre-K, then let's have more harsh language potentially in the contract language, if necessary. If the concern is the timing of opening or the lease agreement or when we're going to demonstrate it to you, let's discuss timeline." There hasn't been a meaningful, genuine discussion since May of 2022 when we ended our three months of really meaningful, meaty contract negotiations. Since then, it's been unilateral communication or rhetorical questions. It hasn't been, "Let's sit down and have a good-faith negotiation" that keeps students and families at the forefront and the best interest of them in all of our decision-making. Because if we open a preschool a year late because that's how it plays out, not because we want it to, but that preschool stands for the next 100 years, that's good for kids and families. And that's our position on this.
And if I can just put a finer point on that. So, contract negotiations go up through May, go into June, and then we get this one disagreement about preschool. And like we briefed last time, like we argued the last time, that one disagreement. And eventually, it was U-Prep that said, "Okay, fine, we'll take your language." Which is why we have said, and which is why your order says correctly, that at the end of the day, the parties had an agreement in principle. Because we finally said, "Okay, we'll take your language that you want in June." I think it was June 23rd of 2022 when Mr. Bethke, U-Prep's attorney, said to Mr. Salazar, "Okay, we'll take your language." So, now don't we have an agreement in principle? We got nothing. They didn't do anything. And then finally, in October, they say, "We're not going to enter this, into this contract." After we have been asking them from June through October, "Don't we have an agreement? We took your language. So, can't we finish the contract, get it signed? Nothing." And then they say, "We're not going to enter a contract."
Thank you very much. Board members, I want to make sure that I'm giving the opportunity, Dr. Scarsica.
Thank you. Ooh, my mic was on the whole time. Good thing I wasn't doing nothing wrong. I'm going to cede my, the rest of my time to Member Plomer. I believe she still had some questions left.
Some of mine have been answered in this conversation. So, I'm going to hold off and hear from the rest of the board and see if they have these same questions till the end. But thank you.
Okay, very good. Dr. Esser?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you to both sides for reappearing in front of us again today. I do have a question. I have listened to all the board meetings. Before my colleague, Member Solis came, I was the representative for Adams 14. So, I do listen to the board meetings. One thing that concerns me, and I don't know if this should come up in questioning or in deliberation. But the board goes into executive session, they come out, and they read basically what we would consider a motion and then they pass it. There's no discussion. So, I don't really know what the board is thinking. I don't know what individual members are thinking. I only know the motion. And that, so, that makes it very hard for me to try to, there's a blank spot where I put in my own, my own thoughts. And I would be so much more relieved to hear what each board member was thinking when the motion was passed, as we do on this board with all motions.
Madam Chair, if I may respond. You know, we considered that last time you said it back in December. And the fact is, is that the law doesn't require either you as board members or us as board members to have to make a comment or even the legislature to have to make a comment every time something is passed. No one is required to do that because what is passed is the statement of the board. That's the statement of the board. The resolutions are the statement of the board.
So, where does that resolution come together? Is it in the executive session?
It's part of discussions, just like yours are. When you come out with motions that were pre-prepared by council and then you come out and then you pass your motions. I mean, these things are all pre-prepared and there's discussion on it in executive session, just like you all do. And so, oftentimes, people are like, "That's, that's, it reflects everything that I want to say." And so, our board has been very good and diligent about relying on what their resolutions are saying. There's nothing else that needs to be said. And I believe, though, that President Lovato read a statement. She did, she read a statement. And so, that reflected the feelings of the board. And so, I just, Director, I just really want to be careful that the law doesn't require anybody to make a statement before taking a vote.
Ms. Bergy, would we be allowed in executive session to discuss what we're thinking as far as what that motion's going to be?
Madam Chair, I hate to do this to you, but I might say that this might be something that if you want deeper legal advice on this particular, I think it might be appropriate for an executive session. Sorry.
That was perfect. It could not have been any better. Thank you, Ms. Bergy.
May I respond briefly as well, not on a legal point, but on a policy point?
Yes, of course.
Thank you very much. I just want to say, I appreciate your concern, Dr. Esser, but I would ask you to consider how it puts Adams 14's board in a no-win situation. This, I think we all know, this board has been under an immense amount of scrutiny and has to deal with struggles and challenges and legal process and proceedings unlike any other school district board of education in our state, I'd say probably ever. I dare say that in the history of the state in my limited lifetime. This is unprecedented. And I think they're doing the best they can do and they're doing what they feel is right in the process that they feel is right. And see, what happens is, is if individual members start speaking, do they, are they able to express all of their thoughts? And are, or is they're going to say something and then, "Oh, remember what the so-and-so said at that meeting, the one comment that was made and here, you know, it gets used against them."
Oh, trust me, Mr. Faro, we all know what that feels like.
Right, I'm just saying, from that perspective, you can understand why, I hope. It's a very difficult situation for this board, unlike any other board in the state has to be in. And, you know, they've made, they've made the decision about how they're going to approach that. And they've decided, as Mr. Salazar said, you know, and we said this last time, and I know it may be unsatisfying for you, but they've put their reasons in writing. They didn't, some people write short resolutions, right? But they wrote a long resolution to put all the reasons down so that you have them.
Thank you. I'll save it for deliberation. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Esser. It occurs to me that we have been going for two hours now and I'm going to call for a 10-minute break before I cut off any remaining questioning in case board members, in an abundance of caution, if board members think of another question they want to ask, I want to give you that opportunity. So, let's take a 10-minute break. We'll come back, finish up our questions, go into deliberations and make our decision. Thank you, everyone. We'll see you back here at 11:10. And I'd like to continue with board member questions. I think Dr. Schroeder had a question she wanted to ask.
I did, and my mouth is full, so I apologize. Very quick question of Adams 14. Considering that there are challenges with this contract, are you willing to have You Prep go to CSI?
I mean, I, I think that would have to be presented to the Board of Education, but I don't know. It seems premature, but what, I don't think, what indication we have that they would accept that.
How can it be premature after 13 months waiting for a contract? Premature is...
Premature, because I'm not the decision-maker for the Adams 14 Board of Education.
Okay.
They'll need to decide it. But here's the issue. I mean, they've, they've essentially decided that university prep should not operate a charter school in their jurisdiction. So how is it that everything would be okay if it's a CSI school? That doesn't resolve these issues.
Well, a lot of families want it. That's how it would be okay.
It, it just doesn't resolve the issues at all. I mean, essentially, the district is yet again being forced into a situation that is determined is not in the, in the best interest of its community.
We have a few board members who have not asked questions yet. Do we, do we have any, any additional questions, board members?
So I appreciate both sides. This is a really tough situation. I did want to ask You Prep if there was any comment that you wanted to make. I know that Board Member Durham's name has come up, and I haven't really heard anything from your side around that issue. So is there anything that you feel like we need to know on that?
Yeah.
And we did discuss.
Go ahead.
Thank you for asking. We did discuss this at the December hearing, but I'll reiterate. That comment, from my lens, is taken incredibly out of context, and was in no way meant towards a threat to the district, or coercion, or any of these words that are used to describe it. We spent three months negotiating a contract, 50 hours together, 20-plus meetings, in addition to the homework outside of that, to get to a really healthy and robust document that we all could agree on. And what I stated in a meeting in early June was, "I really hope none of this has to go in front of the State Board or involve State Board members." That, that was it. It was a plea to say, like, "Let's get this done. We can do this together, and we don't have to go proceed with anything further." Hearing the reaction to that comment via the resolutions passed by A14, actually directly apologized that it was taken in that, in that light, because that was not my intent. Intent and impact can be different. And I apologize to Adams 14 publicly at the December hearing, I'll do it again, to state that that was not the intent. I apologize if the interpretation was, "Why are you threatening us?" By no means. It was simply, "We've done incredible work here. Let's move forward together. Why would we in any way, shape, or form want to be in front of the State Board of Education to solve this problem? We could solve it ourselves here at the table through negotiation."
Thank you for that. I don't think I really have any questions. I have to say, in my past life, I was a CASA. So as a court-appointed special advocate, I worked with kids that were in abusive situations. And there were numerous times that we had two parents that really loved the child. And sometimes, the behavior, sometimes the decisions, sometimes the, the ripe fighting was really detrimental to the child. And what I have noticed in campaigning, and what I have noticed in having conversations with community members, is there's a lot of trauma here. And I don't think it was You Prep's intention to be, or add on to trauma, but there's a lot of trauma in Adams 14. A lot of trauma in that community, a lot of trauma for those families, a lot of trauma for those students, a lot of trauma for the board, for the superintendent, for that school district. And what they really need are some heroes. Some heroes to step up and say, "We're going to do this better, and we're going to stop the fighting, and we're going to go forward and really, really try to do what's best for kids." Now, I don't think it was your intent to add to the trauma, and I think that this is not a usual situation of starting to, you know, a charter in a district. This is very unusual, what's happening in Adams 14. This is very precedent. This is going to affect other districts. This is going to affect decisions that move forward. So this isn't just an ordinary type of, "I'm applying for a charter in this school district that really needs this charter." It's, it's a lot bigger than that, and it needs to be handled as such. So I don't know if we're going to solve all the problems here today. In fact, I would say we're probably not. But I would hope, moving forward, that we really think about these kids, and we really try to resolve this situation, and knowing that there's families that really do want You Prep, and there's really some families that want to stay in Adams 14 District, and they want to see it thrive, and they want to see it do well, and they support them. And both can coexist. That, finding that middle ground of coexisting without bullying, without threats, without intimidation, and really coming with your guard down, saying, "Let's do this work." And so, I'm hoping that can happen. I, I think this may have to, you know, follow the process that it needs to follow, but that's just kind of my perspective as a new person on this board, as someone that has gone into Adams 14 and spoken to families, spoken to teachers, spoken to, to students. This, this is a very, very sensitive group, and the, the scars are still fresh, and any little thing will open it back up, and the trauma starts all over again. And we're not through it yet. It's still existing. So I would ask for some grace as you move forward, knowing that this community has been traumatized and is still in that process. So I would just say, keep that in mind moving forward. But I don't have any additional questions. But I do appreciate, and I, and I don't question Adams 14. I know this community loves this school. But I do appreciate, and I don't question Adams 14. I know this community loves this school. I know this community loves their families, and I know that they love their students. And I'm sure you could say the same thing in the conversations that you've had with students and with families. And so this isn't an easy situation, but yes, if you have something additionally you want to share.
Thank you, and I really appreciate you focusing on that issue because we haven't heard that focus here in the last hearing and very little here at this hearing. You're right. It means something when we are told, and he didn't just say board member, he said Steve Durham. And there is a record of it. Mario Marquez wrote that record contemporaneously, that day, of what was said to him and to Ms. Burke. I wrote an email to their attorney that day, objecting to the threats. And it means something to us because Mr. Durham has made some very egregious comments against our district over the course of two years. There is a complaint against him on the level of racism and harassment and discrimination filed by one of our board members that still remains uninvestigated by CDE or this State Board. And so he could have picked anybody else. He could have said, what if I involve Dr. Escarsiga? What if I involve Dr. or Ms. Board Member McCleland? What if I involve the Chair, Angelica Schroder? He could have said anybody else. No, he said Steve Durham. For him to say it wasn't intentional, yes, it was. Because of the deep history and the egregious comments Mr. Durham has made against Adams 14, he selected that name specifically, which triggered a very strong response from Mr. Marquez. And Mr. Marquez's response is in the record. So yes, you're right. There's a lot of trauma here, but in the context of contract negotiations, if one party is trying to threaten another or coerce them into a contract, that opposite party can just say, no, we're not going to engage in this because what other behavior are you going to engage in if we do give you a contract? That's the best interest of the students in our community. Sure, there may be students who want to see this contract go forward, but we have to think in a larger vision that what happens if things go south with this contract with them, which is entirely possible, given the nature of the relationship, right? Now we're in another situation of having to battle an outside entity on contract issues. And so it's in the best interest of the students to say, no, we're not going to have this entity here because they threatened us with the very person who wants this district gone and who has made comments against our students, against our administration, against our community that we consider to be racist, discriminatory, and harassing. And it is in our best interest to protect you from someone who will use that person as leverage against us. That's the best interest of students, from an indigenous man and from our Board, that is all Latino, to say, we will not do this. That's the best interest of students. Thank you for your question.
Did you want to respond?
Yes, I do think there's a way forward, and like I'm sure you saw in your CASA work, sometimes it's a way that maybe the two parents haven't thought about. And frankly, one, I think, very viable option is the one that board member Schroeder suggested, which is Adams 14 Board could pass a resolution allowing U-Prep to go to CSI. And that would, I think, be one possible win-win where U-Prep could then operate a school in Commerce City like it wants to, and the Adams 14 Board wouldn't have to be in a relationship with U-Prep if the feelings that are being expressed are the ones that carry with the Board. And then we would have an U-Prep school, which my view is, is in the best interest of the pupils, the students of the community, and we wouldn't have to have the negative connotations which have been expressed here today. So I think that's one option. I do also think that another option would be kind of putting this behind the parties and moving forward with Adams 14 engaging in good faith contract negotiations, saying, yep, we can agree to this contract. Let's sign it. Let's move forward. And then we have a contract which spells out clearly, here are the expectations that we have for you, and then you need to live up to them, or we can revoke your contract. So I think that's another option, which would allow for the families to win. Specifically to your commentary, we don't take any of the trauma lightly. I wouldn't say families coming from Five Points or Northeast Denver or the new Columbia-Venezuelan immigrants that are serving in our schools right now who are homeless and living at the Samaritan House. It's live trauma. It's real. It's historical trauma. It's lived trauma. It's the work we do every day. It's the work we're passionate about. It's the work we care about. Carla's representative of the scars in the district, sitting here today, leading the new school. So I appreciate your sentiments very much. In twenty years of public education, serving our students from this background, and hopefully twenty-five more years, if my wife lets me, this is the work, and you have to be sensitive and compassionate. And I recognize that a remark in a moment was not those things, but I fundamentally disagree with Mr. Salazar's position on what was said in that moment. I have nothing but love for children, community, and the work we need to do going forward to ensure there's opportunities. Opportunities for every kid. That's the work we've always done. That's the work we're always going to do. That's the work I do each day. I teach kindergarten right now. That's the work I do with my five-year-olds. So to think anything otherwise about U-Prep, myself, or our organization, I think is false. It's just fundamentally false. And I think our track record, our behaviors, our efforts, and our love say otherwise.
And I would agree with you to an extent. I think working with children, especially in high-poverty areas, I was on a local school board, and I know those traumas that you're talking about. This is new trauma, though. This is a whole new game, and that's when I'm talking about that sensitivity of saying, I may not, we may not have known how to do this right because we've never seen this before. So if we did this wrong, I will own up to that, and I will apologize instead of defending myself and saying, I know that trauma. Is it time? Okay. And that's what I mean. You reinstate the trauma when you negate the trauma of what's being felt, especially if you've never dealt with that trauma before, and this is new trauma. So that's that sensitivity I'm talking about that is missing, that really, really needs to be going forward in approach to a district that has gone through this so much. And it's not even just this current trauma. It's been years of trauma of, you know, hard leadership, not being able to get things to work together, you know, as a system. And I come from a local Board. I know what that looks like. We had a great superintendent, and we struggled hard, even though the superintendent knew what she was doing, had the experience, but we didn't have all the elements. And we suffered, and our students suffered. And bringing that together takes time. It takes passion. It takes energy. And it takes a group on every level willing to do that work together, and they're trying to do that, and they just are tired of people pulling the rug out from under their feet. And that's that sensitivity that I'm asking, and that grace in moving forward and really, truly trying to understand their trauma of what they've been going through and continue to go through. But again, I don't think we're going to solve that here, but I do appreciate you coming before us. I am very saddened that anyone coming before this Board would leave here feeling like they were disrespected that much. It breaks my heart because I can tell you, as a woman of color, I have experienced that numerous times in making me feel like I don't belong there, I'm not enough, and I'm not supposed to be at that table. And so I am deeply apologetic to anybody that comes before this Board. We have tough discussions. We have tough decisions. We have to ask hard questions. But I would never want anyone leaving, being in front of this Board, feeling like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Solis. Board Member Morella, I want to make sure I don't skip over you. Are there questions that will help you to have a good handle on this case before we close questioning?
Yes. So for U-Prep, I just have a question because there was a lot kind of going around. Will you guys be able to provide in the twenty, or the coming up this year in the fall? Is that for the preschool, childcare, or early?
If a contract is signed ASAP, I think there's a possibility of achieving that outcome. The question will be on construction timeline, to be very direct.
And then how many families about do you guys have that are waiting to be?
We had one hundred and forty intent to enroll forms, and we submitted our application in September, so we're still hovering around that number.
And then Ms. Salazar mentioned earlier that some of the students are going to, that are living in the district currently are actually busing out or being transported?
Yes, we had families that expressed interest in not attending Adams 14. And so when they did so, out of their own willingness, we told them, well, why don't you come look at our campuses? If that's something different that you're looking for, maybe the different thing that you are looking for is what we offer. If so, then our doors are open to you. And right now, I have about eight or nine families from Commerce City that every morning make the trip to our Arapaho campus without counting our Steel campus. And they're there every day, and they are, they're my heart. And it's because that's where I grew up. That's my heart.
So just a little follow-up. You said you spoke to some families earlier on or throughout this process, and some of them were kind of on the fence now, maybe, because of what's going on?
They are. And it's the timeline that keeps getting moved, and it hurts the community. And especially because when we brought to them the intent to enroll, brought to them the interest forms, the plan was to open up this school year, and their children are growing, and they're getting older, and they are now looking for something that has that to offer. And now they're not even able to afford housing in Commerce City sometimes, so now they're moving further out.
Okay. For Mr. Fierro or Mr. Salazar, I understand you guys said that the charter was approved. It's just the contract process, correct, is what you guys are feeling that there's a miss? From listening, it sounds as if they have met almost every expectation, but there was no follow-through from your guys' side. What does it take to get to that?
I think, okay, no, there wasn't everything that was met. It was that pre-K three and four that they promised that we approved their contract, or the charter application, in December regarding that issue. That's not met, and that was a big part of their proposal. Once again, underscoring the fact that where this contract really, the negotiations really broke down was not that only that they would not live up to their charter application promises, but it was that threat too. And so it made us realize that this is an organization that's trying to get into Adams 14 that isn't really negotiating with us in good faith. They would rather use a bludgeon against us to try to get their terms rather than actually try to negotiate in good faith. And you'll see that in the record. From about, I would say about January 7th, moving forward to about the 17th, we were having discussions about what does this mean with you not opening up pre-K three and four? And I had to take it back to the Board because this is an absolute change. We need to talk to community about it because once again, it's an absolute change, and then the threat hits, right? So there were still negotiations that were happening, and I was also very clear too. Even though the Attorney General's Office tried to place language in the last order saying that we had an agreement in terms, I was very clear in my, I think it was June 7th letter or email, no, we did not. We did not. And I said very clearly that we did not. So it was the threat, though.
The threat, to be clear, was for Steve Durham threat.
That's right.
Okay. Now, help me understand, because how did that come about? Were you guys are in a meeting, and they just said, you know, we're going to get Steve involved? Or I don't understand why they would even say that. I'm trying to, what was your perception of it?
So I wasn't in that meeting, but it is in the record.
I did read through it.
Okay, so Mario Marquez, he put in his notes that what happened...
And real quick, what's Mr. Marquez's role again?
I'm sorry. Yes, he's Chief Operating Officer. Yeah, okay. So Mr. Marquez wrote it right after it happened. They were having a discussion about this new change, that we're not going to be able to open up pre-K three and four this first year, right? And so it was a sticking point. They knew my communications with their attorney, where I said, hey, look, this is something that you had promised the Board and what you promised the community. I have to take this back, right? And so we were in this little phase of making sure that community knew, making sure that the Board knew what this change was going to be or what they're proposing. They then had a meeting, after I sent out my email, they then had a meeting to have a conversation about the contract terms. Mind you, they also had not put in those contract terms any waivers that they were requesting from the district. That's part of the statute, right? So they didn't have that in there either. So they were meeting. And in the course of that meeting is when the threat came. You don't want me to get the State Board involved. You don't want me to get Steve Durham involved. We know what you've been going through through MGT, and with the State Board, they even cited MGT and our problems with MGT, right? You don't want us to do these things, and then that's when Mario responded. You do not threaten us with the State Board. And he put that in writing, and then I followed it up in writing.
So MGT, help me understand, because I heard that a little bit earlier too. Were you guys initially working with MGT on conditions and how was, were they your initial go-to?
We never spent any meaningful time working with MGT on any conditions or contract negotiations.
Well, because earlier on, it was said that, I think you guys had, maybe I misunderstood this when I heard it, that you had requested or that you weren't going to be able to meet some timeline.
We had direct conversations with senior leadership in Adams 14, saying, are we going to be able to have a contract negotiation negotiated in the ninety-day window? There's back and forth discussion in which we decided, actually, we needed to the extension. We needed a longer window. And that's why there's an email from Mario Marquez to myself, in which we agreed to an extension of that contract timeline to say, you know what, the ninety days isn't as important as the partnership. Let's take longer to do this. Let's do it right. Let's do a third-party facilitation. Let's make sure every, we met with every department within Adams 14, from transportation to food services to safety and security, special education, ECE. I mean, it is a robust process. It's a playbook I would recommend to any district going into partnership or contracting negotiations with a public charter school. And so MGT played no role in any of that work.
But it sounds like at some point, their group feels bypassed, like you guys bypassed some process that they might have had. Is that my understanding of that correctly? Because I felt like somebody was bypassed along the way in the communication process.
I think, Madam Chair, thank you. Board Member Morella, I think what's a little bit lost here is we spent a lot of time at the last hearing talking about some important nuance and distinction between related issues but very separate issues, right? And that is, when was the preschool going to open and when was the school going to open, right? Because the initial kickoff discussion that we've been referring to, where MGT was there, and that's our understanding is, is that MGT made an agreement with University Prep that, hey, we can stretch out the runway here on this school. We can just stretch it out because it's going to, you know, it's going to take a while to negotiate this contract, and who knows what was said between them. But so at that point, once you decided that, hey, this is starting to look like a planning year, see? And then the issue then became, and as we've tried to talk about several questions today, the Adams 14 Board of Education, when you say bypass, I mean, that's the bypass. The Adams 14 Board didn't negotiate the contract. They were waiting on a contract that had been presented for their approval. And I think what happened is, is U-Prep, and why Mr. Singer made the comment that he did, the threat, is that I think that they thought that the Board was just going to, that Mr. Marquez would be able to get the Board to just sign off on the contract. And he was very clear that that wasn't, that it wasn't his decision. Like you heard me earlier say, it's not my decision. The Board's going to make their decision. They have, they are the ones that have that public trust obligation. And so they didn't appreciate that the consequence of that decision that MGT made without including the Board was that we've jeopardized, we find out later, we've really jeopardized the preschool opening in year one. The school is still going to open, but it's not going to have preschool. And see, and that's why MGT's involvement was, in that moment, was so critical because it's like a stack of dominoes are set up, and that's the result.
Well, and you know, and I heard a lot of great, and Mr. Salazar, great comments earlier. But one of the things I think about, I hear a lot of, we got to protect the district, protect the district. What about the students? I mean, that's my question. Families, students, you know, a lot of times districts kind of like... You know, a lot of times districts kind of like, you know, I, I live in the Pueblo area, which is very similar like Adams, where heavily Hispanic community. Providing choice for Hispanic students is huge right now. The Latino community, sometimes we get left behind in these kinds of opportunities. And right now I see a, a group that went through the full process to, what, thirteen? How, how long did you guys go through starting this from start to finish?
Uh, I mean, the contract negotiations were January to June of twenty twenty-two.
But even before that, you're whole with the families.
Yeah, no, we started, just for some context, because you're joining us and they weren't here in December. What happened was, we, we have, we had thirty families at the time coming to our U-Prep campuses and we just started asking a question of like, hey, we didn't recruit from Adams fourteen?
Of course.
Uh, they were showing up, they were exercising choice, which, which the state of Colorado has that opportunity, which is powerful for children and families. Said, how did you find out about us? We're happy to have you, we're happy to serve you, we're happy to work alongside of you, but is this, is this what you wanna have happen? And they said, no, we actually want a choice like this in our backyard. That kicked off a design process that started in January of twenty twenty-one that led to an application that was submitted in September of twenty twenty-one, that led to an approval in December of twenty twenty-one. And now we're in February of twenty twenty-three, so it's two-plus years later. Uh, and I'd say what is also unique and special about this collaboration is it's exactly how a new public charter school should exist. Families will and want school-level expertise and resource merged into a new school and a new identity that says, this is gonna be everything we want for our kids in our own backyard. Not, not an external operator coming in, but sitting down and having hard, difficult, meaningful and productive conversations. Say, what, what do you want the teacher attributes to be? What do you want the program to be? And, and that's how this all actually came to fruition.
Can I make a comment too?
One, one second, Ms. Salazar, thank you, thank you Director, Director Verella. Um, so choice was important, that's why the board approved the application based off of the promises that U-Prep made. As I said, this is uncontested, what they put in their application and it's uncontested that Adams fourteen said on December fourteenth of twenty twenty-one, yes, we approve your application. So yes, choice was being honored. Now, Mr. Singer makes a comment about why choice was important and, 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 you know, talking with the families and what have you. And yes, talking with those families and finding out choice was important was, you know, it's a super important fact for you. Just as important of a fact is that they made promises to all these families leading up to the Adams fourteen Board approving their charter application and then behind the scenes, because they didn't do this out in public, behind the scenes, they switched it around. They said, now we're not gonna open up with the pre-K three and four and we're not gonna even open up in August of twenty twenty-two. They didn't go back to the community, otherwise it'd be in the record. They didn't go back to the community and have community forums saying, hey, look, I know our application said this, but we're not gonna be able to do it. They didn't even go to the Adams fourteen Board and say, hey, I know that you passed a resolution approving our charter application, but now we're not gonna do it. That's the important part of it, it's not about choice. We said yes to the charter application, it's about the switch that they did.
May I add as well?
May I address that?
Hold on, hold on, Sir, I'll go ahead.
Yes, so uh, there was no bait and switch, there was no bypassing, MGT was, they played no meaningful role. I would, I would commend to you, go back and read my opening brief, starting on page three.
I read it.
Go, go through to page twelve. I, I took a lot of time citing to the record very carefully because the record documents, um, email by email, the close collaboration that not MGT, senior leadership like Mr. Marquez from Adams fourteen engaged with Sing, um, Mr. Singer and others to, to engage in this process, to mutually come to an excellent charter contract. So there was no bypassing, there was no keeping the Adams fourteen Board in the dark, right? Again, look at the, the meetings that they had, um, the leadership they had with Adams fourteen's Board. Look at, again, the March eighth meeting, again, directed to that. There was no bypassing, there was no, the, the record just does not support that. And you can test that for yourself by reading through the specific citations.
No, I, I hear what you're saying.
Madam Chair, Board Member Verella, your time is up.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any board members with time remaining who'd like to get any more questioning in?
And Madam Chair?
Go ahead, Mr. Durham.
Thank you. I'd like to start with Mr. Singer. Uh, Mr. Singer, uh, do you know offhand, uh, the two, the two schools that you operate? Uh, on the C-MATH tests in twenty twenty-two, do you know approximately what percent of your children uh were proficient in math and English? Round numbers will do or a good estimate?
Yeah, spring of twenty-two, uh, which is our, our worst year in performance history. As a result, I think of, of everyone in any public educations that come out of the pandemic was about twenty-five percent of students under or above grade level. Uh, we're projected to be back to around forty percent, uh, which would hopefully ideally see our kids, ninety-two percent of whom live in, in poverty, and ninety-four percent are students of color, back to above forty percent are achieving state averages against their, uh, quite frankly, non-FRL peer group this school year based on our current uh mid, mid-year assessment data.
So better than forty percent are proficient, is that correct?
I said that's, sorry, I'm saying we're projected this year to be back on track, which I think it's taking us, because it's taking a lot of folks a, a number of months and years and effort to ensure kids get back to where they deserve to be and need to be.
So historically you've been, well, do you remember the numbers for twenty twenty-two, even though they're lower? I don't mean to embarrass you.
No, it's not embarrassing, it's real. I think it's real for anyone who's in this work, that, that our kids suffered the most. When I say our kids, I mean, kids from the most marginalized backgrounds during the, the pandemic and post-pandemic.
What was, what was the number?
No, I'm saying those, that number's between twenty and twenty-two, twenty-five percent from those, from that school year.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Um, and then, uh, let's see, now, I'd like to ask, uh, Ms. Salazar, going back to this issue of notice for the board meeting, the, um, can you tell me what mech, or what, how the meeting was posted and uh what methods of posting you used?
Yeah, we used what the statute requires, we posted electronically on board docs. Twenty-four hours in advance.
Electronically on board docs, okay. Um, how many citizens did you have attend the meeting, just out of curiosity?
Uh, which meeting, uh, Board Member Durham?
The board meeting that where you adopted this latest resolution rejecting the contract?
It was, that, that meeting, thank you very much for the clarification, that meeting was done virtually. I don't know how many people were, um, present at that, at that meeting.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, um, okay, I'll hold the rest of my comments then for the, oh, Mr. Singer, I do have one more quick question. I can't remember the last time that I talked to you, but it, it, other than saying a casual greeting when you've been in front of the state board, have we had any conversations the last year or two that you recall?
No, sir.
I don't, I, it could be as many as five years since we've had a conversation, but certainly, I don't, when Dr. Schroeder and I toured your school. But other than that, I don't remember a substantive conversation you and I have ever had.
I think the last engagement was touring you and Dr. Schroeder through our U-Prep Steel Street Campus to see the work we were doing with the school serving, at the time seventy-two percent multilingual learners and ninety-five percent students from Latino backgrounds, um, to expose you to, to the work happening uh at our turnaround campus where we demonstrated uh the strongest success for a school in one year of turnaround from its previous performance. And we were excited to invite members from the state board uh to come see what was happening in that building with our children.
Thank you, and I would, I would observe that that was a very impressive uh display that day and I was very impressed with your results, so thank you.
Okay, are there any other board members with time remaining who'd like to ask additional questions? I want to make sure you get the full use of your time if you still have questions.
Do I have any time left? No, I don't need any, I was just gonna give it to Board Member Plomer, she needed it.
Board Member Plomer?
Because I was gonna cheat and just put my questions out there and then let it open in the wind for how much time it would take to respond. So I appreciate it. Um, this has been such a rich conversation and I'm very happy that I attended both hearings because I think, um, the issues from both parties have been, um, put on the table and we got to hear a rich discussion on, um, what both sides have been putting forward. So I appreciate what, what people have done. My, my, one, my big question and then is, so we heard from Adams fourteen about them contacting their families, um, about the delay in the opening of the preschool. I'm wondering if Adams fourteen could tell me, how have you engaged in the community on their reaction to the delay? This piece of the contract, their, their view on the delay in the preschool? Like is, how, could, how have you engaged the community, what have they said? Um, I know from the board perspective, it's felt like a very important, um, intentional, um, bait and switch kind of thing. But again, what, how have we engaged the community to understand their, um, reaction to the, the delay?
So, so thank you very much for that question. Um, I will turn the board's attention to the August board study session that we had with U-Prep. Um, that was noticed, twenty-four hours in advance. Uh, U-Prep showed up, answered questions from the board. That was a time for community to show up and, and, and have discussions on it. Not too many community members showed up to that, to that board study session. And then, of course, there was the October tenth, twenty twenty-two board meeting uh where the initial vote was taken place to deny the contract. And, um, we had members of U-Prep's board, um, and other supporters show up. And, um, that is where we described in our resolution, uh, the hostile nature of the response the board, our board received when we denied that contract. Literally had someone slam his hands down in front of, uh, the superintendent on the dais, um, saying that we were making a mistake. People stopping our board meeting, um, to, to yell at our board members. Uh, Maria Zubia, when our, our Secretary of the Board, saying, uh, they're so hostile. Um, so that, that was the, that was the interaction that we had. Uh, we're not even certain that those individuals live in Adams fourteen, by the way. Um, they, they may be from outside into other districts. But they showed up and they were hostile and you could see it in the recording and you can hear Director Zubia saying, they're so hostile. So that's, that's the reaction that we got.
I guess my question was, with Adams fourteen families, what was the, once you knew that the preschool wasn't open, were there any community meetings other than board meetings where you got feedback from people that they were very distressed? And that, um, they, so I, I guess I'm just trying to see if, if there was, what, how and, and if you heard that feedback that for the community, this was a, a, a big, a big deal to them?
Board Member Plomer, there was no outpouring of outrage that this contract wasn't happening. Uh, we didn't get massive phone calls or emails from anyone. Um, or otherwise it would be in the record, uh, from the community, uh, saying that, you know, they wanted U-Prep in, in, in the school district. We, we didn't receive anything and, and that's why we had that board, that, that study session in, in, in August. That provided an opportunity for U-Prep to sit down with the board, um, to, to have a conversation about, you know, what they had made promised, what their promises, uh, in their charter application. The people didn't show up from community then to, you know, to make any comment to the, uh, to the Adams fourteen Board. Uh, so I guess, in short, what I'm saying is that, no, we didn't get some type of, you know, massive influx of emails or communications from the board or from, uh, from the community expressing dismay about, uh, about this contract not going through.
All right, thank you.
Can I make a comment, sorry?
Yes, go.
Uh, yes, um, and thank you for your comments about trauma. Uh, and I, I want to say that, uh, I was one of the people that probably didn't behave correctly. Uh, I'm very ashamed of that. Uh, I brought my two sons to what I thought was gonna be a great moment for U-Prep and for the community. Um, they have actually, my, who are graduates of U-Prep, they've been coming to all the board meetings. And I did not behave properly. I was really angry about, uh, how the vote went, how the decision in my mind was made. And I made some comments on the way out that I, I am not very proud of and I did it in front of my kids. Uh, I almost brought the kids over today so they could see me actually make an apology to you all, especially to the board and Mr. Salazar. Uh, I recognize that that was not proper and I definitely fully own it. I was upset, I think I, I still have a right to be upset, I just shouldn't be showing it that way. So I just want to say that that was a moment and that was probably not our proudest moment and I'm sorry for that.
Can I add one small comment to that? Um, uh, again, if you haven't already, I would recommend you go back and look at the August board meeting and the September twenty-seventh board meeting from twenty twenty-two because I think those, both those board meetings give you, I think, the best reaction we have in the record as to what the community was saying, the dialogue between the Adams fourteen board members and, um, the people that came to speak on behalf of the U-Prep School. Especially in September twenty-seventh board meeting, you'll see that there are many people who came and spoke with the board and board members spoke to them about why they wanted a U-Prep school there. Um, why they were saying, please open the, the, the school, you know, it was approved back in December. So I think that's the best place in the record where you see the, the desire by members of the Adams fourteen community coming to the board and speaking to them. I would then contrast that with the resolution passed on October twenty-fifth. When you compare the comments happening both at Adams fourteen board members in August and, and September of twenty twenty-two and then the board resolution that was passed on October, uh, twenty-fifth of twenty twenty-two, they're just so different. Um, and I think it, it, I think the two illustrate maybe the two sides of this whole process.
Thank you. We've had a lot of conversation about who was part of the negotiation meetings with it, with MGT or was it district folks? Are, are there records of attendance of who was part of those committees and who attended in, in those negotiations between, um, March, when it was approved, to extend the negotiations in June when things, um, seemed to go off the rails?
Uh, yes, absolutely, there are. And again, uh, if you look back, my opening brief in the, in pages three to twelve and the places I cite, they're extensive records. Because Jen Holliday, who was the third-party facilitator, um, kept very good records about everyone that attended, the conversations that were had, the progress that was made. And you can see from the written record, uh, how it was very collaborative, very open on both sides, um, moving forward productively throughout that entire time period, so yes.
Thanks, and do you have any comments, Mr. Salazar? You look like you want to speak, Madam Chair.
I, I, I mean, I, there, there's, you have the record in front of you and, and there were Adams, uh, primarily it was Sheila Burke and, uh, Mario Marquez who were negotiating on behalf of the district and who also made very clear to U-Prep that they had no authority to make decisions, that had to go back to the board as it, as it does, right? And you, you were a board member and you know that it always comes down to you. And so, you know, there's a record of that. Um, I did not get involved and neither did, uh, from what I know of, neither did, uh, you know, um, counsel. We didn't get involved until I would say it was, it was around the end of May, beginning of June. And then that's, that's when we started really looking at the, the contract and me comparing it with the, with what the board was looking at and, and their application.
I apologize that that was time, but I do want you to finish your sentence.
Okay, and, and, and that's where it was like, well, hold on a second, these, these two things aren't, they're not mirroring up with each other, right? And, uh, and so that's when the questions began. Thank you.
Okay, so that, if, if it was necessary to use some of Dr. Schroeder's time for that, she cedes her time for that purpose. Okay, uh, board members, anyone with remaining time who has remaining questions?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Durham?
I'd like to yield, I'd like to yield the rest of my time to Mr. Verella.
All right, Mr. Verella, any questions for you?
Yes, I, I just, it's a two-part question from Mrs. Salazar. And so earlier you said that Adams fourteen is meeting the needs of, um, of the community. And right now we have parents that want this program, this choice, which you said you approved the choice program, it's a contractual deal. And what is, I think there's about a third of the students in your district that are choicing out right now. If you're meeting the needs and a third are choicing out, why would you, why would you put this barrier up? I'm, I'm just not understanding it.
And Board Member Verella, I'm just gonna push back, we, we didn't put up a barrier. They did. They made promises to our community, public promises, from September, leading all the way up to December. And then behind closed doors, they changed. We didn't put up a barrier. When I found out what was happening in June, I said, hold on a second, that's not what you told the board. I need to take this back.
I need to take this back to community, and I need to take this back to the Board." Pretty reasonable, that if you're going to say something to the decider, the decision-maker, that you're going to do something, and then you switch at the end, I, as an attorney, I have to take that back to my client, right? We didn't put up a barrier. I just said I had to take this back to my client. And then, the threat comes. We didn't put up a barrier.
But, but I've heard them essentially apologize in numerous different ways, except for grovel down, I mean, what else do they need to do?
No, sir. No, Mr. Varela, we, we do not, and I want to be clear about this. We will not have someone threaten us with a State Board intervention. And then, and they never even came, they had an opportunity in August, when they sat down at the Study Session, to apologize to our Board, and they didn't do that. They had another time in September to apologize to our Board, they didn't do that. They had another time in October to apologize to our, to our Board. And instead of apologizing, you heard about the outbursts, right? It wasn't until they got here in December that they're like, "Oh, mea culpa, we're sorry about it," right? No, sir, we don't take that as an apology. The threat was very intentional.
So, is there no, there's, in your eyes, there's no resolution from that threat, then?
Thank you, sir, for finally getting to the point. There's not going to be a contract. There has been too much done. Promises made to the community that were taken away, behind closed doors. And then, the threat. And as a party to a negotiation, we are stepping away from it, because this is not an organization that we want to engage with for the best interests of our students. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Salazar. I have no further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Varela. Dr. Skarsak.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair. Based on the statement just made, and this is for legal counsel, why are we here? No, not, no, take, I take that back. I know why we're here. But do we actually have to then make a motion and go through all this if this is the decision on behalf of Adams 14?
Madam Chair? Yes, I would advise the Board to make a decision today. Ultimately, Adams 14 will have to decide what they do with that decision. But I believe that you are here today to decide the appeal. It's been requested by the appellant, and the Board should decide it.
Thank you.
Any other Board questions before we close questioning and pivot to the closing statements for each party? Once we close the questioning, there'll be no further opportunity, but I think we may have exhausted our questions. Dr. Scheffel and Mr. Durham, any other questions? If you have time remaining?
No.
No further questions, no further questions, Madam Chair, thank you.
Okay. Seeing no further questions from Board Members, I think we're going to move forward, and we will now call on University Preparatory Schools for the five minutes of closing statements. And I'll wait till the timer begins, so we make sure that we're coordinated. Okay, you may begin.
Thank you, and thank you to all the members of the State Board. I'd like to start, actually, I'd like to just proceed with a number of quotes. Here's the first one. Quote, "No provision of the Charter Schools Act authorizes school districts to simply stop negotiating a charter contract and abandon the statutory process. Rather, following an approved application, the Charter Schools Act imposes a duty on school districts to negotiate a charter contract that meets both its needs and those of the appellant." Close quote. That's a quote from pages 5 and 6 of the December 20th Order that you all passed. It cites to Booth, the case we keep talking about, page 654. I then add cites to Section 105 and 107.2, which support that understanding. Here's my second quote. "Once an application is approved, there's an obligation to negotiate in good faith, quote, 'to resolve any issues necessary to permit a school to open a charter school.'" That's from Booth, page 654. Here's my third quote. Quote, "An approved charter application shall serve as a basis for a contract between a charter school and the chartering local Board of Education." End quote. That's also from the Supreme Court in Booth at page 653, citing Section 105.1. The Court then goes on to emphasize that, "As the basis for," the language from the contract language, that means, "As the basis for a contract," means the application does not become a final contract. But, open quote, "An application's approval is intended to be an interim step toward creation of that contract." Close quote. That's page 654 of the Supreme Court decision in Booth. And then, it goes on to say, open quote, "The holders of an approved application," like U-Prep, that's me inserting that, "have a reasonable expectation that the problems identified by the local Board can be resolved, and agreement on a final contract can be reached, and a charter school will open." That's again, from the Booth Court, page 654. Lastly, the, the Court said, open quote, "The State Board is authorized to substitute its judgment for that of a local Board when deciding whether or not a local Board has made the correct decision," close quote, "about whether it's in the interest of the, best interest of the students, the district, and the community." Those, that's the law. That's the, that's the law of the Booth case. That's, that's the law that this Board correctly laid out in its order, and that's the law of the Supreme Court. It clearly forecloses the argument that Adams 14 has been making to you. That's the legal argument, which is why I come back and close with my request that you all play your part in this statutory scheme, and reverse and remand and order Adams 14 to complete contract negotiations in good faith with U-Prep by a date certain, and I would request that date being February 23rd. They could either negotiate with us and come to agreement on our contract, and sign a contract with us, or they could pass a resolution saying you can go to CSI. Thank you for your time. Mr. Singer?
I would just say that the issue in the contract around the preschool wasn't if we'll open a preschool or keep our promise. It was what happens if there's a delay, because unfortunately, delays can happen. That didn't change our hiring of Dean of Early Childhood Education. That didn't change our putting aside $1.5 million for facility renovations. We hired a manager of multilingual education to build the bilingual program elements. We hired a Dean of Operations Resident, who's sitting right here, and of the community, and an alum of Adams 14. We hired a Dean, sorry, a Principal Resident. We've invested millions of dollars, including half a million dollars of the RISE grant from the Governor's Office to do this exact work. I believe our actions and our investment, our budget, and our time demonstrate our commitment. Ensuring there's what-if language in a contract in case there is a delay is appropriate in normal behavior in contract negotiations. I'm proud of the contract. I'm proud of the work we did with Mario and Sheila. I was grateful for them to come to our Board and discuss this with our Board. I'm grateful for all the times we're in front of the A14 Board. If you watch videos, you'll see parents of the community speaking about what this means to them, very clearly in public comment, numerous families. And our commitment hasn't wavered, and it's not going to waver, because the commitment is to children and choice. And the commitment is to changing life trajectories. The fundamental hard work of running excellent schools that is exhausting and beautiful all at once. That's the work we're here to do, that's the work we remain committed to do. Our budget will remain committed to it, our time, our resources, our efforts, unwavering. And if you all continue to support us as the State Board of Education in any ways that you can, we will deliver high-quality seats, then ensure there are more. Sarah Azr says, "Going to NYU for Law School, 20 years from now."
Thank you. We will now call on Adams 14 School District for the five minutes of closing statements, and I'll wait till our timer's ready. Okay, you may begin.
Thank you. Schools don't tolerate bullies, because they have the best interest of the kids at heart. The Adams 14 Board of Education isn't going to tolerate bullies anymore, and it said enough is enough. It's not going to be forced to sign a contract with U-Prep that doesn't satisfy its legitimate concerns. Been there, done that. Signed a multimillion-dollar contract that gave over significant authority to a for-profit company that was based out of state. Why? Because this Board forced it to, under threat of school closures, conversion, or reorganization. That doesn't have to continue, it doesn't have to happen again. Because I say today, where will it stop in this case? Where would it stop? Oh, they apologized today. Where, where will it stop? Because after this contract's signed, and if Adams 14 has an issue with something at the school, maybe it's the first performance report comes in, and there's legitimate questions. Wow, this isn't, you didn't meet your benchmarks, what's going on? Oh, hey, what are you talking about? We, we got this, we got this. And, and leave us alone, or we'll go back to our friend, Mr. Durham, in the State Board. You see, that's why it's not going to work. And that's why the Board is firm in its position. It's not just an argument, it's a position. It's a choice, it's a decision, it's respect for the local community and its values, and its own determination of what is in the best interest of the pupils, the district, and the community. This appeal is an opportunity for this Board. You have an opportunity today to step up and stop the command and control approach. You have an opportunity to say, "School districts just shouldn't be bullied." Adams 14 has been, has been forced into enough unacceptable contractual relationships, and it stops today. It's not going to be, have to face more threats and intimidation, no matter what disputes might arise with this charter. You have the opportunity today to put a stop to it, and that's what we ask you to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we will begin the Board's deliberation. That concludes the hearing in this second appeal, and our deliberation will begin now. Colleagues, we may now discuss amongst ourselves the issues relevant to the case. Questions may not be asked of the parties. Questions may be asked at any time of our attorney. And if I may have an indulgence, I did want to ask our attorneys about any implications with respect to a date certain? If it's all right to ask that on the record? Are there, is it problematic for us to provide a date certain? Or is that something I would need to ask in an executive session? I apologize, I'm not attempting to be humorous, I genuinely don't know.
No, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm mulling that over. So, I would say, I would probably recommend against a date certain, just because that isn't included in the statute. I think if you'd like to discuss in more depth kind of the rationale for that, I would recommend we do an executive session if there are deeper level questions.
Okay, thank you. Board Members, I want to open this up for your deliberations. Who would like to begin with their thoughts on this matter?
If I don't see anyone, I might begin myself. I think my comments in the last hearing do still stand. It is my opinion that allowing interested families and interested students to have the ability to access university preparatory schools is in the best interest of students. I think it's in the best interest of the district, and I think it's in the best interest of the community. Parents want to be able to allow their children to go to a high-quality school where they believe their child will have the best chance for success. That's good for students, that's good for families. And ultimately, if these children who would attend University Prep are able to have a successful experience there, that's good for the district as well, because it helps the district to be able to offer one more pathway to success for children who need it. So, those are among my thoughts on this matter, and I, I welcome the thoughts of my colleagues. Dr. Scheffel or Mr. Durham, any thoughts for you at this juncture?
I would just echo your comments, Madam Chair. I think that this school would be a tremendous asset to the students and families in this district. And I'm sorry there's been so much acrimony and difficulty in the relationship. I'm hoping that as adults, we can put the children first and the needs of the families, and that we can support the completion of this contract, so this school can open as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Scheffel. Mr. Durham, do you want to weigh in, or do you want to hold your comments?
Sure, I'll, I'll start at least, Madam Chair. First of all, I think, let's see if I can get the quote right. Wrote it down here, but I think, I think that Mr. Salazar said, I think it's a quote, that "we are meeting our community needs." Well, we, we have, we have a circumstance where I think that's demonstrably not true. Thirty-five percent of the children in this district, their parents opt them out of the district schools. So, at least thirty-five percent of the, of the, of the, of the needs of at least thirty-five percent of the, of those are not being met. In the 2022 CMAS tests, Adams 14 finished next to last of all of the measurable districts that, that we had. It was 167 out of 168 districts. The other districts in the state had two small numbers to have their results published. Those results showed that 5%, only 5% of the students in Adams 14 were proficient in mathematics and, and at grade level. And only 13.7% were proficient in English. So, it's, and that, so that, that's 2,039 students in the district whose needs are not being met, because they are not proficient at either mathematics or English. And somehow, the legislature has charged this Board with trying to deal with and improve the situation for those 2,039 kids. And the legislature has given this Board a relatively small number of tools. And we have tried to use a number of these tools in Adams 14. And apparently, I think what we are about to decide is whether or not the perceived threat by, by U-Prep of exercising the legal rights they have to remedies in front of this Board is somehow a threat that so taints the relationship with the Adams 14 Board that they are willing, and we, and they are asking this Board to be willing, to allow the circumstance of only 5% of their children being proficient in mathematics, and 13.7% of their children being proficient in English, to persist. And I would submit that that statement was an admission against interest, because it is clear, at least to me, that even if they were threatened, that perhaps, on behalf of those 2,039 students, someone should be doing something rather extreme to see that these results do not persist. And I think the legislature clearly gave this Board the authority to do everything from put the district in some sort of reorganization, to closing schools, to using charter schools, and using a number of other, and using relatively few, a few other things that are within our purview to try and help these kids. Certainly, none of us, none of us, and I do not apologize for being harsh in my comments about the district and their leadership. How can you be any other way than to simply say that 5% proficiency at grade level in mathematics is not acceptable? It's not acceptable. It's an embarrassment. It's not embarrassment just to the district, it's an embarrassment to us and to this Board, because the legislature tasked us with doing something about this. And did they give us the tools necessary to get this job done? I don't know. Is it possible that, that, that the courts will find that there is sufficient reason for Adams 14 to turn down this particular charter application? You know, that's certainly possible. And that's fine if that's the result. But the one result of that will certainly be that there will be more children left in the situation where 5% are proficient in math, and 13.7% are proficient in English. And I, for one, will, will not apologize for not wanting to be part of that. I insist that, that these children can and should do better, and that we should do our part to make sure that they do better, and we should use all of the tools in our toolbox to effect enough change to ensure that there is an improvement. And we're not there yet. So, the one thing that I think you can say for certain, that, and I think our Chair just said it, is there is no doubt that this high-performing charter school will benefit the students of Adams 14. And the kids are the ones we're supposed to care about the most. I'm sorry if people feel offended, but if, if being, if it takes being offended to get something something done and make some progress, that's okay with me because we need sufficient action to turn things around in this district, and we need all of the tools in the toolbox to be used to ensure that one year from now, two years from now, five years from now, these results will not be the same as they have been for the previous ten years. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Durham. Board Member Plummer.
So, this has been really an issue that I've lost a lot of sleep about. I've had, I want to thank the legal team. They've spent a lot of time one-on-one with me, trying to figure out my lane as a new board member, and figure out what this decision actually means. I do want to address my feelings about the district. I was very excited yesterday to hear the performance review, that Adams 14 is working really well with its new management partner, and that there's some bright spots. And I will unequivocally say that I believe that Adams 14 will turn things around, and that there is hope for the future, and that kids aren't going to be left with the same fate. I, I have lots of hope in that and, and believe that to be true. I think this charter discussion is getting mixed up with lots of history, with the reorg decision, with all sorts of things that have happened in the past. And instead of being able to focus on this specific issue, lots of feelings from lots of people, from conversations I was never part of, enter here, and that it has become very difficult to figure out what's best. So, here's, here's my honest question. I, I'm sitting here going, I, here's, here's my struggle. Current law, I believe, does talk about different remedies that are available to Adams 14 in the contract negotiations about whether or not you can exit. Let me start over. I believe the question that Adams 14 is asking about whether or not they can be forced to open a charter school based on contract negotiations not being set is not, is a, is a decision that will be made in the courts. Right now, it's, it's an open question. I don't think anybody's challenged it. So, that decision is out of my hands, and it sounds like that's where this is going, is that we want a rendering of a decision about just that question. And based on the current statute, we had a process where you, where it's been followed, right? You started the contract negotiations, somebody said, you know, we're at an impasse, the district gave their reasons why they wouldn't, and I am very disturbed by, and I understand your point, Mr. Salazar, that it's not requirement that you engage in deliberations with U-Prep, but you didn't. And so, I'm left going, the remedy that was in the law, that there was 30 days, that you could have had even a conversation where you met within the time and you said, "I don't agree," and we're at impasse, didn't happen. So, I don't get to judge whether or not that that process didn't happen. So, I'm trying to figure out, as, sitting here saying, "Well, if I, if I vote and, and, and say, you know, Adams, I believe Adams 14 has a point," what do I say to the next person who doesn't respond or negotiate within the time? If that had happened on U-Prep's side, it would have been done. It's like, okay, I don't have to think any, you know what I mean? On either side, I have to look and say, "Am I going to give equal?" And I have to say, I have to give equal, equal say into whether or not each party took advantage and, and participated in the process to the, to the extent allowed by current law to get to where we are right now. And I don't know what to say. I, I'm, I'm truly, as you can tell, very conflicted, and I don't believe, so there's the, I, I don't know, I'm not, I'm not really expressing myself as clearly as I'd like, but I'm, I'm trying to, and maybe my colleagues on the board who have done this before can talk to me about precedent and, you know, I've been on a local board, and you do feel like, are, do I actually have a choice in this, or do I not? I understand that feeling. I've, I've felt it. But at the same time, there's, there's, there's ways that we're not taking advantage to address that and, and use the system to the advantage to, to the fullest extent. So, I guess where I am is nowhere right now, and would love anybody to see if I'm the only one that's feeling this way, or how, how we move forward with, I believe, a case that's going to be ultimately decided in the courts.
Thank you, Board Member Plummer. I think this is a good time to allow our legal counsel to just, for the benefit of our new board members, a third of our board is, is new board members, and to just let us know the standard to which we are held and our role in this, in this process. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairwoman. The standard available under the Charter Schools Act for you is whether the local board's decision is contrary to the best interests of the pupils, the district, or the community. That's the question before you today.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Borr. I hope that's helpful. I know that probably still leaves you slogging through the deliberations, but I, I hope that, that helps. Board Member Plummer.
It does. I'll be happy to hear what the rest of the board members are thinking of in response.
Very good. And, you know, I neglected to add in my own comments that, in addition to my own take after going through all of the evidence that this is in the best interest, that university preparatory school opening in Adams 14 is in the best interests of students, the community, and the district, it's also consistent with the approval of the local district themselves who approved this application. So, I neglected to mention that within my comments, and I want to make sure that I do include that, for all of the reasons that Adams 14 approved the application, and for the reasons that I have stated, that is why I will be siding with university preparatory schools in this matter.
I, I imagine there, Dr. Schroeder?
I'm just going to try a first pass here. I'm troubled by the fact, and I think this relates to the concern for my colleague, of the painfulness that is in Adams 14, and that somehow, this application is a part of that. In the best interests of the students, the community, and the district is about this school, and it comes under our charter law. And it doesn't say that the rest of the district, there's anything wrong with it. So, most of the top-performing school districts and school, and schools in them have a significant number of charter schools. And the reason they have those charter schools is because parents want choice. And when they exercise choice, they're not saying, "Everybody else is bad." They're saying, "We offer something that is different from the rest of the district." And that's why we hear from parents who want this. And the fact that this is getting mixed up with the accountability challenges that are underway does not really negate, nor should it hurt the district per se. This is about being able to be proud to say, "We have a menu of choices in Adams 14 for our families," and say that with pride. So, the districts that I've represented have a bunch of charter schools, and they're all different. But they don't say this other school across the street or across town is not a good school, because that's not the issue. The issue is choice, and whether the parents in that community want that choice. I upheld the decision of the Adams 14 board, I think it was last month, when appeal came to us, be the change, if I'm not incorrect. The parents, there weren't enough parents to want it. So, I thought the choice that the board made was really the right choice, because this wasn't something that was important to the families, the folks who elected you. But this seems to be a very different situation. Here, you had, what, 700 people sign a petition, and you have 140 folks who want it. This is something that is desirable. And I think as a board member, we're all elected, right? You're elected, and we're elected. We do have to respect the wishes of our constituents, and if we don't, well, we can get voted out, but we're not doing our job. So, I think it's very important that you look at who is talking to you, and what do they, what do they want. This contract thing is big boys not behaving the way we want our kids to behave, quite honestly. I can't think of anything else. I'm sorry. I'm too old, I've been a mom for too long, to get that this is the sort of thing that you can just kind of, you kind of got to get over. But I'm troubled, and Board Member Plummer, I, I get the fact that you're kind of worried about what the effect of this is on the deep challenges that come as a result of what we did with the reorganization. We did that because we don't have very good rules. We don't have very good options for the kind of challenge. Hopefully, the legislature will give us some better tools, some less blunt tools, if we ever have to do this again. But that is a different issue than what is before us today. There's a community request for a program. As Mr. Durham said, he and I were invited to observe it. It's different. It's different than any other schools. It meets the, the demographics of the community where it wants to serve. And if you're listening to your community, your folks, and they really want that, you've got to have a really good reason now, and you've got to have a really good reason in November, when you're up for election again, to say why you don't respect that. But I don't, I'm, I'm really uncomfortable. One of the reasons that if you, I've been a part of the accountability laws since they've been in effect, the current ones. We have never picked charter as an option for a school or a district, and there's a good reason for that. Charter is not punishment. We've never had a district come before us to say that one of the things we wanted in order is a charter school. Charter school isn't going to accomplish anything. It's just a different governance model. That's not how charters really ought to be used, and I actually think it hurts our accountability law somewhat, that that becomes a threat. It should never be a threat. It's an option. It's something to offer your community, and as I said, some of the, your neighbors all have charter schools. It's something that you really should be proud of, to have some options, especially when they're different, and they're strong. And I'm the first person to support a district that says, as last month, no, you know, this is somebody coming in wanting to start a charter school, as opposed to my constituents wanting this charter school. Those are two very different points of view that I have. So, that's my first start here. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Schroeder. I saw two hands go up at once, so Board Member Solis will be followed by Dr. Skarsak.
So, I just want to say, this is really difficult. I have a lot of the same feelings that Board Member Plummer has, and I want to definitely recognize Adams 14, you all are working hard, and it's noticeable. Thank you, and it's going to pay off. Keep doing what you're doing. I did want to point out something that I'm not sure if everybody caught, but we had a board member who called out Adams 14 for their numbers and told them, "I don't care if you're embarrassed, because I'm going to ask those tough questions. I'm going to tell you things because I want you to do better for your kids." Totally get that. I would agree if that's the feeling across the board. I also heard Mr. Singer ask the same question, "What are your CMAS scores?" And unfortunately, his scores are lower. And the response was, "I'm sorry, I didn't mean to embarrass you." That's a pretty big contrast, and that is the type of behavior that I am talking about. That is the trauma, that is the sensitivity that is needed in this situation moving forward. You just experienced it, you just saw it, you just witnessed it, because, Mr. Singer, if your scores are down, you do have work to do, and you even admitted that, and we appreciate that. But to tell one entity, "I don't care if you're embarrassed," and then tell another entity, "I'm sorry I embarrassed you," I'm sorry, that's not right. We need to hold all accountable, and all means all. This is a really, really tough situation that we got to, and I hope that you understand now that this trauma is very different than trauma that you've experienced before and moving forward, that you really, really keep that in your mind, because this will give you added tools when you decide if you want to help another district, or you want to, you know, think about opening a school somewhere else. And I appreciate your apology for your behavior. That does take a lot to recognize your own mistake and to apologize, and I appreciate that you considered your kids and what they witnessed, because we, as adults, aren't thinking about that enough. Our kids are watching us. We are the examples. What do we want that to look like? And I apologize, I don't have all the answers moving forward for you two. I just know that we're here, and we have a responsibility and a duty, and that's what we've been elected to do. But please know, I hear you, I see you, and I will call it out, just like we do kids. We teach bully behavior. When you see someone getting bullied, you see, if you see something, you say something. We expect children to narc out their peers because they see someone being mistreated. And yet, we don't hold adults to that same standard. And I am astonished that we ask more of kids than we do of adults in a room, and that will not be the case. I will be the example for our children. If I am asking them to do something, I will also do that. So, again, please know, I support your efforts in helping Adams 14, helping Commerce City, helping families, and I appreciate the work that you guys are all doing to, to make a change. Thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Solis. Dr. Skarsak?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a very diverse board of nine, and I am thrilled to be sitting here today with this group, because you all have such excellent, excellent points. And I think I've got it through my head, and then the next person says something, I'm like, "God, that's a good point." So, but a couple of things that are on my mind that I want to just call out. First of all, just, I felt, he heard me, Mr. Singer heard me whisper when one of the other members said, you know, "Charter's do better in the state," or "If you have lots of charters in your district," and I'm, and I'm just like, "That's not true." You know, I think of the Little Tins and the Louis Palmers and the Cheyenne Mountains that actually don't have a lot of charters. What they have is a lot of very wealthy families with high-income parents, whose students have all the advantages, and they're the extremes, right? So, I get that. And then I get the population. I absolutely understand the population in 14. But this isn't about charter schools. This isn't about the argument of whether we think they're better or not. I don't even think it's about choice or not in that respect. So, to me, what has flipped this is a school district approved a charter, and that seems to be a pivotal moment in everything here. Had they not approved the charter, we could be having conversations like we're having around the quality, choice, all that kind of stuff, but that's not what happened. So, I get, I kind of get stuck on that, that, to me, that's a point. The other part that I get stuck on is the, in the negotiation, so having done the work, I couldn't imagine negotiating without my supervisor knowing what I was doing at the time, right? Letting them know, informing them. So, I get a little stuck that the superintendent wouldn't have known about the delay. I know the board knew about the delay.
I know the Board knew about the delay. Again, because I watched the Board meeting, I saw that. So that's just kind of a sticking point for me. These are things I think I said in the beginning of my last, my statement, my first one. Another point is, something I do want to say, is that no matter what happens today, if you do get this school, you'd sign a contract or whatever, do not release them to CSI. It will be used and weaponized against you forever, just as the school you currently have is. So the school actually approved a charter that has 1,200 students, that live, most of them inside that district. And it consistently has brought out that these students have fled the district, they have not. What they chose to do was not authorize that school. They chose to release it. And it just is, their numbers come down to about 20-some percent that leave the district, which around those small districts is pretty common. And then I know there's not schools on the north end that were ever built. So anyway, those are the kind of things that just, I feel compelled to talk about. I haven't had a chance to mention that. So I would not do that. I do wonder, again, about the numbers of the parents that want the school. And should 50 parents influence what happens to 7,000? That's kind of where my mind goes. And then I'm like, you know what? I don't even think that's the question. I think the question before it's for me is, much like Member Plummer said, it's the process. It's just simply, I think, if I go right down the line, right? What I would want to see is, I would like to see the initial Board's order or the initial Board approval go through, charter contract signed that fits both parties and the school open to those people who, parents who have come forward. That's what I'd like to see. I don't know that that's going to happen. I do not, I'm going to ramble here and keep going, but I do not like the standard of having this Board, I don't like the law that this Board gets to sit in the shoes, or supposed to be in the shoes of the local Board, deciding their, what I believe is in the best interest, that I know better. I don't believe I do. Again, however, I'm going to just focus on the issue of the contract. And I do believe it is still worth going back and having the school have a contract, if possible. With, I looked at the revisions that you made, they seemed appropriate. I would still like one more swing through to follow up, to make sure you actually hit those things that you said you promised. They said they're not there, you say they're there. Who knows what's, what that is. But I think that was all... I think that's all my current comments. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Skarsak. Dr. Esser?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And there's been so much said. I don't want to repeat what other people have, have already brought forward. My only job here is to consider the students, the district, and the community. Adams 14 is a community I know very well. Had the partnership with Regis University and Adams 12 for years. And I'm still part of that consortium that advises what needs to, what, what can be improved. And if you know me, you know I'm not a rubber stamp for charters. I'm just not. I don't think any choice is a good choice. I think it has to be good before it should even be part of a choice. So having looked at what UPREP has done in Denver, I've been very impressed. Haven't been able to visit the school yet. I would like to believe, Mr. Perro, that no one caves. That there has got to be a way, that there is an agreement and some give and take so that the kids are the ones that profit. Not us. Not the State Board, not the local Board, not the adults, but the kids in the community. And I believe we should honor the, the approval of the application and work together on the contract to make sure it is what's good for the community, good for the kids, and good for Adams 14. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Esser. I think all of the Board members, except for Mr. Varela, have had a chance. So, Mr. Varela?
Thank you. You know, I, I really commend the district for standing their ground on what they've been doing and kind of dealing with, and, and I appreciate the comments made by them. But at the same point, I, I really think about, as a parent myself, I have school-age kids right now. And if I went through a process that was put before me, and I was told, "If you do A, B, C, and D, then you'll have the outcome you're looking for." And then I think of Adams 14, the community is, is heavily Hispanic, which a lot of folks, and even it's just like down in Pueblo, a heavily Chicano community, where for the most part, you know, people are afraid of working the process or going through the system just because over generations, the system has failed. But then I see the system is working in their favor, and then at some point, there's a roadblock. How do we, how do we make sure that system doesn't fail then? I mean, personally, I think I'm conflicted, like a lot of my other Board members, because where do we go? What, what decision do we make? But at the end of the day, when I heard our, our lawyers say, "If it's good for the pupil, good for the district, good for the community," and I think a few other of the Board members made the comment that it was good for the district, well, the district obviously is here and it's not good for them. You know, they're saying, I mean, what I've taken from the reports. But for the student, it seems like it's the right thing to give them that menu option. And for the parents in the community, because this is something they have fought for, they have worked hard for. And it's tough, because so often, you see, like, somebody mentioned earlier, the charter schools that are in a lot of the wealthier communities. And I think when we look at charter schools, like in my community in Pueblo, we say, "Man, like, they're doing so well up there in Springs and this and that. How do we get those options?" And then when you learn the process and you get really excited and you go out and you talk to your neighbors and you're putting together a petition and you're doing all these things that you believe are the right things because that's what the legislation says to do. And then all of a sudden, it's like, well, we approved you, however, we're not going to write a contract for you. And then as a parent, what do you say? Like, well, wait a minute. It's, I can't afford to bus my kid out of the district. But then other kids, other parents who are working class, you know, in our community, they can afford to drive their kids 10, 12 miles. But then that parent who went through this process, who has four kids and working three jobs, says, "Well, wait a minute. I can get a school in my neighborhood." And they do all the work. And then we tell them, "No." I, I just, I don't know. It's tough, because how do you rectify that? I mean, then you create another barrier for a community that is already missing certain things. We're talking about scores, CMAS, you know, which I, I served on a charter school board in the past. And, I mean, our CMAS scores were low at some point, but once they went through high school, they excelled. We had kids, I mean, some of our alumni, as the president of the Latino Chamber, became a county commissioner. But I, I don't think it's the scores. I think it's doing what's right for the parents and for the family. And hearing those members in the community, and not every kid has a bus pass. Not every kid has a parent that can do homework with them after school. And if we have a, a school that's saying, "We're going to open up in your community and we're going to build it better, give you an option that is better," why would we not fight for that? And I respected what you said, Mr. Salazar, about being a indigenous or Latino and fighting for that. That is, that is where I'm at. But we got to fight for every student. Just because it's, it seems right in the moment to fight and say, "Well, we're not going to do that contract because you don't have authority." But is it the right thing for the student? Is it the right thing to tell that parent who works four jobs, three jobs, or that single mom, "Well, guess what? You're not going to have a community school. Keep going where you're going." I don't think that's fair. I don't think that's civil rights or justice. I believe it is an issue that we're dealing with today, a civil rights issue of my generation. A parent of a first grader, a third grader, a fifth grader, and a high schooler, that I have choice. I have decisions. I don't have to say, "I want my son or daughter to go there." And for us to take that voice away from a community? I would be embarrassed of myself. Because I have the opportunity to take them out of a district, or I have the opportunity to move them somewhere else, or I can drive them 30 miles? And I say, "Well, hey, everybody else, it's okay, you know, we're not going to..." I, I just, I'm, my heart's going out to you guys for fighting for this. And I understand where you're coming from, because it's tough. You're in a district where you have other Board members, or you guys have heard your failing, your failing, your failing. Well, that's not fair. It's not fair to do that. But we have to find common ground. And we have to remove our own personal problems or prejudice, or whatever it may be, whatever somebody said, somebody did, and get back to the mission. It's to serve our students, putting kids first. All day today, I, I keep hearing, "What, what we want as a district, but what about the kids? Let's fight for them." That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Varela. Board members, Board Member Plummer? Yes, everyone's gone once, so go right ahead. You'll be starting round two.
Okay. So, helpful conversation, thank you. Round two. I want to just address the CSI question. Because we're in a loop, right? If the Board in, the next step would be for UPREP to bring forward a motion to ask the Board of Adams 14 to release them to CSI for a charter. If that's denied, then it comes back to us. No?
Does our legal counsel, would you like legal counsel to weigh in?
If, if they will not release to CSI, it doesn't come to us. It's just, they just can't go to CSI. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. All right. So there's, that's, if the local Board does not want that as a remedy, then that won't be a remedy?
Yes, there's currently no pathway for a review by the State Board for a decision not to release to CSI.
Okay. The, the next scary thing that's held over the district's head is removal of exclusive chartering authority. Can you address what that, the, what that looks like? And when that might, and does that come before the State Board?
Madam Chair. It's an excellent question. I think, I, I would say I would caution the Board to think too much about that here, because it's not relevant to this particular decision. And there's not a, a request for that pending at this time. So I think I would suggest that we have further conversations about that and focus on the record here and what's before us. Thanks.
I, I guess where I go, and, and this is from serving on a local Board, and what you're told in your deliberations, and it comes up right away. It's not an iterative. It's like, well, here's, here's how this would roll. You would go here, and then you would go here. And whether or not that's correct in a legal framework, or it's the way the State Board talks about it, it's very much what's happens at the local Board level when you're talking about your, your pathway and your lane in making a decision about whether or not to accept a charter. So again, it may or may not be right or wrong legally, but when you're in the seat and you're doing those initial approvals, it's definitely part of what you hear about. So I'm not meaning to bring things, and I know it's not being considered, but you, but I know what gets discussed in local Boards as they're looking at the current pathway that's available in law, on how they could make a decision. So just wanted to put that out there.
Madam Chair. No, I, I understand completely, coming from the local Boards myself. I would say, as was spoken about earlier, the way that the local Board did speak was through resolution. And so when you're looking at what was the local Board thinking in this situation, the record really is that, that Board resolution on their decision points.
Okay. Thank you. Well, that, that helps my, my thinking. And again, I, I think I'm just going back to my, you know, we have a current, current million statute, how the, the charter law is written, and where, where our lane is. So I'm, I'm still figuring out how to do that. And then when I, what I want to get back to is, what I would hope to see, and again, this might not get back to negotiations, depending on what we decide. It's up to both parties to want to enter into more negotiations, if that is ever a possibility. It doesn't sound right, like, right now that Adams 14 would be interested in that. But is there a restorative process that can be taken to get through what was a considerable hurt based on what was said? We know that there's been apologies. We know that it doesn't feel sufficient. Is there any process that can be undertaken to get trust back? Because again, this is a school that's been working for a while. From my understanding, it is a little different from the, be the change, that there's some, there is more interest. So I guess I'm just trying to, again, and I know you can't answer, and I'm just thinking out loud, but I'm, I'm trying to figure out what a decision means and if there's a path forward for y'all. And so, as you can tell, I'm, I'm not any further than where I was about 10 minutes ago, or hour ago, maybe.
Okay. Okay, good. Thank you, Madam Chair. This may be just, I just need a head nod. We hate to be doing this to you, but I just, maybe a head nod. Our decision here in no way sets a precedent in that the next round, if this ever happens again, we can vote any which way we want, based on the merits of the case. We are not bound by the decision we make here today for future cases that might be brought before us.
Great question. It's probably a little more complicated than you might think. Because if you, you're expressing your rationale in this case, sometimes rationale can be persuasive or can implicate future cases. But as individuals, yes, you always have the right to vote however you choose to vote.
That's what I meant. And then that, really, that was my question, as individuals, you are not bound. So I think it's a little different. That was one of the first questions I asked when I came on this Board two years ago. Is, "Well, but if I vote this way, then I am bound for the next six years and they can convince me then." No, that is not true. It is your individual, by case by case, you do not, you're not setting yourself up for future votes. So, that, just that. Thank you.
That makes sense. Each case has its own body of evidence. Any other Board members wishing to deliberate further? I want to make sure I'm allowing you all the opportunity you might need. Mr. Durham or, or Dr. Shuffle? Anything from either of you?
Nothing further for me, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Durham. Dr. Shuffle? Oh, yeah, Dr. Esser?
I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, please.
I move to grant the appeal and remand to the local Board with instructions to engage in good faith negotiations with university preparatory schools and to complete the contract on the basis that the local Board's actions were contrary to the best interests of the pupils, school district, and community.
That's a proper motion.
I'll second.
Where was the second?
EC.
Dr. Schroeder, thank you. Is there any further discussion before we go forward with a vote? All right, seeing none, Ms. Maramba, will you please call the roll?
Board Member Durham?
Yes.
Board Member Skarsak?
Yes.
Board Member Esser?
Yes.
Board Member McCullin?
Yes.
Board Member Plummer?
Yes.
Board Member Shuffle?
Yes.
Board Member Schroeder?
Yes.
Board Member Solis?
Yes.
Board Member Varela?
Yes.
That passes 9-0.
Thank you, Ms. Maramba. Thank you to everyone who was here before us today. We appreciate all your time and care in this matter. I'm going to call for a...
You got two peeps?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes, I beg your pardon. I need to assign two board members to encapsulate our, our board orders. Is it best practice to pick one from each of the two major parties represented on the board?
Generally, I'd start with volunteers first.
Okay. Way to make it awkward, right? Sorry about that, everyone. Alright. Alright, Mr. Durham, would you be interested in serving with Dr. Skarsgå to craft a board order that reflects the thinking of this board in this matter?
Yes, I'd be happy to do so.
Alright. Thank you, both of you. I appreciate it. And now we will be breaking for lunch.
Madam Chair, can we just get clear on the times for lunch?
Sure.
We have two more items. We have the Blended Learning Initiative update, and then board reports. So how would you, how long would you like to take lunch?
I'm open to suggestions. What do we think?
We have one staff member virtual who has an appointment at 1:50 that she can't get out of, so it would be best if we could grab lunch, maybe take a ten-minute break and come back here and start the presentation.
Oh, man. Okay.
Should we take like twenty minutes?
Okay, alright, alright. Clearly, that was not...
We can switch, and, I, yeah.
I'd say twenty minutes.
Let's do a twenty-minute lunch? And then we'll launch right in. Will that work? Alright, we'll see you in twenty minutes.
Board members, we are live. Now we're just getting situated.
Okay. Okay, we are back on the record and the first item up this afternoon will be item 16.01 from yesterday's agenda that was put on today's agenda. It's an update on blended learning, on the Blended Learning Initiative. Commissioner?
Great, thank you. I want to thank my staff for being flexible today. Mr. Cottonsteady and Ms. Oaks was here yesterday, but she couldn't be here today. So she is online for a little while until she has an appointment she couldn't change. But we appreciate bringing this to you all for our new board members. This is something we've been talking about for a little while. You know, the COVID crisis really made us rethink and just relook at what are different pathways that students are looking for in their schooling, you know, especially in the high school years where these different flexibilities that we learned a lot more about over COVID, you know, really started to come up in our schools. And we had to look at some of our policies to see like, are there policies we need to change? So we've given some temporary waivers to allow some of these things to occur. And the, you know, the, by giving those waivers, we also ask those districts to participate with us in a learning process so that we could figure out if there were policies that you all would want to permanently change. So that's what Mr. Cottonsteady and Ms. Oaks have been leading their teams and leading stakeholders in. And so this is an update on that work. So, Mr. Cottonsteady?
Thank you. And thank you for allowing me to be here today. And I wish I could say this is going to be super light and super breezy, but I know there's some heavy lift to it. So I appreciate and happy to pause and respond to any questions you have. So let's see here. I'll reintroduce myself. So my name is Bill Cottonsteady and I serve as the Executive Director of the Schools of Choice Unit. This unit is housed within the School Quality and Support Division, and we support the state work related to charter schools, innovation schools, home schools, and non-public schools. As it relates to today's presentation, we also house the Office of Blended and Online Learning. And thanks so much for your welcome reception yesterday for Renee presenting on the online application. Joining me is Jennifer Oaks, our Chief School Operations Officer. Much of the focus of this topic relates to educational practices that have school finance implications. Thus, our two teams have been close interdepartmental collaborators on this project. Our purpose in presenting today is informational. It is intended to provide an update on the progress of this work over the summer and fall. Now I'll review our agenda. Our goal is to present information in a way that both provides a general orientation to our newest members and also to provide an update on the work for the full board. We'll provide some background on the Blended Learning Initiative and provide some more specific examples of blended models that are in operation today. The last time that we presented, we mentioned that our next step was to conduct a larger stakeholder engagement process. And today we'll give you an update on that process and the recommendations that came from the work. We then would like to review some options that we feel are most relevant for board consideration, as well as a timeline for when some of those decisions should be evaluated. We'll conclude with time for discussion. So let's start with some background. Today you'll hear us speak a lot about the Blended Learning Initiative. That is a term that we've used to describe a collaborative project that we've been working on for about the last year and a half. We're using the term blended learning to refer to learning that takes place away from buildings through digital means, but is intended for students who are enrolled in brick and mortar schools. This may include learning where a class is partly in person and partly online, and also includes fully online classes where a student still regularly attends a brick and mortar school. The work of the Blended Learning Initiative over the last year and a half prioritizes bringing practitioners together to learn about experiences with blended learning, learn about successes, learn about challenges, and to develop a growing sense of where the rethinking of policy is most needed. Over this past summer, we've also conducted more expansive stakeholder engagement. This has included getting feedback from parents, students, educators, and education leaders from across the state. I'd like to start with some context. In the traditional paradigm of the past few decades, students have largely attended school either full-time in brick and mortar environment or full-time in an online environment. It was an either-or. This graphic highlights the location of the student under the traditional paradigm. A student was either learning in the school building or at home. What became apparent to us, particularly through the pandemic, was acceleration of a trend that was already gaining momentum. This trend was for brick and mortar students to access at least some of their learning off-site through digital means. We're also seeing growing use of online student learning in school buildings. Thus, you are starting to see students move regularly across locations during a semester and for models to operate that incorporate both types of learning. The stars in this graphic were meant to represent evolving models that are showing up that operate on a blended spectrum. Now, let's look at this evolving approach to learning within the context of school finance. In the blue box, you see a student's schedule that is based on in-person attendance within a brick and mortar school. As you'll see, it is a customary schedule with time when each class takes place in a day. The green box shows a student's schedule for an online student. As you will see, it is the same schedule, except that there are no times when the class takes place. This highlights the unique aspect that an online student has choice over time and when they participate in the class. When looking at these two examples, you may wonder, how do we evaluate funding eligibility? In order to make these determinations, we use our current guidance. The most important guidance comes from our school finance rules. In these rules, we find parameters for determining whether a student is a full-time student, a part-time student, or not eligible for funding. To determine eligibility, we look at whether a student has a schedule which provides at least 360 hours of teacher-pupil instruction and contact in the fall semester, or at least 90 hours or less for part-time students, or 90 hours for part-time or less for not eligible. The rules also emphasize that a home school student may count for no greater than part-time funding and only if they are exceeding the 90-hour requirement in a public environment. In addition to the school finance rules, we also have a separate set of rules, the online rules, that help us evaluating, evaluate funding for online students. In these rules, there are requirements for the authorizer of the school to adopt policies for how they will track student enrollment, attendance, and participation. Authorizers are also required to provide assurances to the department that they will verify attendance and participation. The same 360 and 90-hour requirements apply to online schools, but this rule specifies that an online school may assign equivalent credit hours for the courses that a student takes. Finally, an online school must verify Colorado residency to ensure that the school is not submitting out-of-state students for funding. This slide provides a description of how a course-level equivalency can be applied for purposes of determining student funding. In this example, you will see that the first thing that a district would do for a brick and mortar student is determine the number of days of instruction in the fall semester. Based on the number of days set, the school or district can then calculate what the average daily minutes would be needed to qualify a student as either full-time or part-time funding. An example shown in the box to the right shows that if a school provides 85 days of instruction in the fall, they would need to make sure that a student receives at least 254 minutes of instructional time each day. That calculates out to be slightly more than four hours a day. As the example shows, if the number of calendar days is reduced, then it increases the amount of instructional time that would be needed for each day of learning. Once a school or district determines the number of minutes that are needed in a day, they then will need to evaluate how many courses will be offered in a day. For example, if a schedule includes six courses, then each course would need to be at least 48 minutes. If the schedule provides five courses, then they would each need to be 55 minutes, and so on. Once these calculations are made, the school can create their schedule for the year. Also, these determinations can be used to apply equivalency to online courses. An important observation here is to note that funding eligibility has traditionally been based on the amount of time the student is in the presence of a teacher. With online learning, that assumption has needed to shift because students who learn online are not funded on the amount of time they are in the presence of a teacher. Rather, they are funded on equivalency determinations.
Why do you clarify online funding is also less?
The question is, online funding is also less. That would be true if it is a multi-district online school. So if the school operates as a single-district online school or program, the students would be funded at the same PPR rate as a brick and mortar student. Yeah. This slide shows an application of the rules to the in-person and online schedule. The blue schedule shows the schedule of a student brick and mortar, and the green schedule shows a student online. For the brick and mortar student, the minutes of instructional time are calculated over the day. Those minutes per day are then multiplied by the number of days in a semester to calculate the overall seat time for the semester. Here, you will see that the determination was 408 hours. Because 408 hours is greater than 360, the student is eligible for full-time funding. For the online student, an equivalency of 68 hours is assigned for each course so that it aligns to the same amount of instructional time as the brick and mortar class. This is the number that you get if you multiply 48 minutes times 85 days. The equivalency for each course is then added up for the semester. For this student, the full course time equivalent adds up to 408 hours. Because this also exceeds 360, the student is found to be eligible for full-time funding. The challenge we're now confronting is what to do when a student is blended. For this schedule, we're looking at a student that has some in-person time and some online time. And you may wonder, how does or should this student's instructional time be calculated? In looking at our current school finance rule, we do not have great definition for classes that are taken away from a building through digital means. Our best direction currently is the rule related to independent study. As you will see in this slide, our current rule says that for scheduled independent study, a district shall only include the time of actual teacher-pupil instruction and teacher-pupil contact. Thus, we are left to think that we should apply the independent study rule to online or blended. The other level of direction we receive comes from statute. Under legislation creating the statewide supplemental online and blended learning program, there's a statement which reads that each high school student in Colorado may take at least one supplemental online course per year. However, it does not speak to whether that course should be used for determining a student's funding eligibility. With these two pieces of law in place, we currently offer, at the department, offer guidance within our Audit Resource Guide to how to think about blended and supplemental online courses. This guidance was updated during the pandemic to help focus an effort on ensuring students have access to direct teacher-pupil contact. In this guidance, we specify that for blended courses, any brick and mortar student may take at least one course, but that these courses cannot exceed more than 40% of their schedule. If a student's schedule exceeds this amount, we add clarity that the student should be evaluated as an online student. The same applies for supplemental online courses, and we add additional guidance that each course needs to provide at least 20% of instructional time through synchronous learning activities. When this guidance was released, we learned that there were a range of programs that would be impacted by the guidance as put forward. To account for this and to learn more about the programs in use, we created a variance process. Schools needing additional flexibility could apply for a variance waiver so that they could either offer more than 40% of a student's schedule in this form, or reduce the amount of synchronous learning time that would be used in a course. These variances were essentially automatic. If a school or district applied for the variance, they would be granted the variance so long as they submitted a proper application. This slide provides an overview of the timeline with which we have carried out the Blended Learning Initiative. It's important to note that the pandemic was a critical influence to this timeline. Halfway into the 20-21 school year, we began receiving questions from schools and districts about how, about whether we as a department would continue to extend high flexibility for off-site learning into the 21-22 school year. In response to this question, we communicated a plan to offer continued flexibility, but with guardrails. These flexibilities with guardrails included allowing brick and mortar students to participate in 100% remote option so long as time was set aside for synchronous learning activities. Also, guidance was put Also, guidance was put forward for how to implement temporary remote during the pandemic. Finally, the blended and supplemental guidance that was described on the previous slide was also put forward. For those seeking the variance waiver and those wanting to have a deeper conversation about blended and online learning, we invited those to participate in the blended learning initiative. Meetings began in November of twenty-one and continued on a monthly basis through May of twenty-two. These meetings were largely made up of departmental staff and leaders and educators from schools that offer blended and supplemental online programs. At the end of May, we communicated a plan to implement a larger stakeholder engagement process that would seek feedback from teachers, parents, and the other community stakeholders. That time is highlighted by the second dark orange line that, by that line. That work is now complete, and we are at a phase where we want to start evaluating options as a state. This slide provides another visual of the timeline. At a high level, I want you to see an iterative adaptation that has taken place as a result of the pandemic. As you will see in January of twenty-twenty, we're met with the arrival of COVID as a state. And our response in the school year nineteen-twenty was to offer the highest level of flexibility for ensuring students had access to learning while schools were in a state of widespread shutdown. In the school year twenty dash twenty-one, we extended flexibility at a high level to ensure that schools could offer fully remote learning, in-person learning when possible, and blended models that responded to things like outbreaks, spacing of classrooms, and other types of starts and stops. In school year twenty-one, twenty-two, we impl- implemented the flexibility with guardrails approach that also brought with it the variance waiver. This year, for school year twenty-two, twenty-three, we continued this flexibility with guardrails approach and utilized the variance waiver for a second year. We're now at a point to think about school year twenty-three, twenty-four, and would love to have a conversation about the type of flexibilities we should offer and whether to extend a variance into the next year. This slide provides a breakdown of the extent to which the system was using online and blended learning over the last four years. What you will see is that, starting in the spring of twenty-twenty, a large part of the education system began to use online learning. This included fully online options for brick and mortar students, hybrid options such as an A-B schedule where a student may be in-person on Mondays and Wednesdays, and remote on Tuesdays and Thursdays. We also saw use of other types of temporary online models resulting from outbreaks and quarantines. The key takeaway from this slide is that we've observed unprecedented building of capacity for online, remote, or hybrid learning by our public educators. This resulted at times in the creation of permanent programs such as the creation of new online schools. At other times, it has resulted in the expanded use of blended and supplemental online learning by brick and mortar schools. In an effort to better understand the evolution, we've put together some examples of blended learning models that we are seeing in practice today in the state. We've included four examples in the following slides. The first example is expanded use of the state supplemental online provider known as Colorado Digital Learning Solutions. This expanded use is happening in many parts of the state, but a common variance request that we saw was coming from rural communities that were using a greater level of this option in particular. Under Colorado Digital Learning Solutions' structure, a school or district has the ability to enroll individual students in individual courses that are offered by Colorado Digital Learning Solutions. There are many courses that are offered, ranging from elementary through post-secondary CTE and AP courses. The courses are fully asynchronous, but they are supported by a teacher who monitors student progress and can be available for student support. This option is used for a variety of reasons, but may include providing access to courses that are not otherwise available in the community, expanding options for accelerated learners, supporting students who are unable to attend regularly during the normal school's school schedule. When this option is used by a brick and mortar school, it should be viewed as a course option because the student remains enrolled in the brick and mortar school. Thus, the school or district retains the per pupil funding and would pay a fee to the provider for the course. Current challenges with running this program is that, under our current guidance, a student may have no more than two classes per semester if these courses are taken offsite. Additionally, a district would need to provide at least twenty percent synchronous learning to count these courses for instructional time. Yep.
If these students were in an online district school taking the same courses, and they were not getting any, there was no synchronous that was, they could be fully online, the school could run just like that with no synchronous, they could just be totally independent students in an online school, and they would get full funding?
Yes, that would be correct.
Okay. But because they're enrolled in a traditional brick and mortar school to do the same thing, they're, we're just simply not allowing them to go above the two courses?
Correct. Yeah.
Is this something that is a limitation that's from statute, or is this something we have flexibility on?
We'll get to that, but I'll just answer right now is that we could make changes to our interpretation in that space.
Okay.
What we're working with in right now is that the only legal structures that we have to guide our approach is independent study, and then the statement that says students may take at least one. So we can work within that space in terms of how we approach when a student becomes an online versus a brick and mortar student.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Does this mean that if a student, that a student is a brick and mortar student, then they have to take their online courses?
So, yes, so we define like a supplemental online class or a blended class as when it applies to a brick and mortar student when they are regularly offsite for part of their learning. So if all of the, like if this CDLS class is being taken in a lab in the school building, it wouldn't be considered blended learning. We could apply the minutes and schedule times the days to calculate the student eligibility for funding. So it's only applying to those courses where the learning is happening, at least in part, regularly offsite.
And in either case, the amount of support from the assigned teacher to that class is going to be the same? Whether the student is physically in the building or physically, let's say, at home?
In this example with Colorado Digital Learning Solutions, the support provided by the Colorado Digital Learning Solutions teacher would be the same. Our assumption is that if the student is attending within a school building, that they would have access to some additional educational supports.
And it looks like you've got quite a few slides to go, so we might be finding that some of our questions are answered in your presentation to come, perhaps.
So I just have a, I just have a quick question.
Sure, board members, at least.
So as you go through these examples, you do a blended learning example number three, and you say Village High School. Will in the future, this example of Village High School actually have a term to describe it? I just feel like blended learning is a very loose term that's used in different ways, and so I think it's very confusing for parents if they don't exactly understand what that looks like, and so I'm just wondering, instead of saying Village High School, this blended learning example is such and such, and that's the same across all districts. It's that same word or phrase that describes how that is across all districts.
Okay. So I will take that feedback. And I know as part of our conversation, perhaps like with rule, is one of our conversations looks at maybe exploring a definition within rule that we could apply to some of these scenarios.
And the only reason I say that is you all came to visit District Six, and we consider what we're doing blended learning, and it's not really in any of these. And we had a horrible time explaining to parents what blended learning was. And so, and I'm not even seeing any of the examples here that I would even say this is what District Six does, so that's why I'm asking.
Okay, terrific. So with CDLS, the current challenges with running this program is that, under current guidance, the student may have no more than two classes per semester taken offsite. Additionally, a district would need to provide at least twenty percent synchronous learning. So now, the next example is Cherry Creek Elevation. This is a school that provides a blended learning design that is inclusive of live virtual classes, in-person learning opportunities, and asynchronous online learning. The school provides a wide range of online courses and students enroll, where students enrolled in full-time, full-time in the school, may also attend in-person classes at local middle schools or high schools. There's a weekly face-to-face requirement that may also be online or in-person. An in-person location is available, and if you were to visit this location, you would see a high level of student activity at any given time. In addition, the school serves a supplemental online provider to the district, or as a supplemental online provider, which means that students who are enrolled in neighborhood middle schools or high schools are allowed to take one or two classes online through elevation at the same time. Yes, yeah. Marie, I think my clicker just went out on me. We'll see. So currently, the school operates as a single-district online school. So on the term piece, I am referring to it as a blended school. Technically, it's a single-district online school. That means that any full-time student enrolled in the school will be funded at the same per pupil rate as a brick and mortar student in Cherry Creek. The challenge this model presents is that by operating as a single-district online school, the school is unable to enroll out-of-district students. In addition, for the brick and mortar students who take online courses on a supplemental basis, our current guidance would limit that to no more than two classes per semester. An additional concern was expressed by the school. They mentioned that they were called on to offer supplemental online classes that the schools in their community would prefer to offer directly at the school level. They have noted that current regulations make that procedurally difficult to implement, and they're therefore serving more students through supplemental courses than they would otherwise prefer to do.
Run me by that again.
This is a, so again, using the Cherry Creek example, they would, would say like Cherry Creek High School would prefer to run their own supplemental online classes. They have teachers that want to offer those classes. But the compliance requirements to document eligibility for funding is too complicated, so the school just chooses to use this provider or this school as a supplemental online provider. And that there was concern expressed by this community that they would prefer to be able to do this at the brick and mortar school level.
So does that mean that a teacher who wants to create an online class and show that in class can't do it?
They, they can, but what they, the feedback that I've received is that that's very difficult, like their staff that are responsible for organizing the documentation to submit that student for funding, that it's very complicated for them to do it, and so they've chosen to avoid doing that. And so their feedback is they'd like to see some more flexibility so that they could implement that more effectively and not have as many fears that they wouldn't qualify a student for funding.
Do you mind if I interrupt with a piggyback on your thinking?
Please do, because I'm still.
Yeah, so when I toured Cherry Creek Elevation, gosh, I hope I'm understanding what they shared with me correctly. When my kids were at Cherry Creek High School, they took their mandatory health class or their required health class as an online course. Mr. Cotton, steady, do I understand correctly that that then might be offered through Cherry Creek Elevation even though those kids are full-time? This, the student might be a full-time student at a brick and mortar high school within the district, am I?
Yeah, my understanding of how they approach this in Cherry Creek is that they, they currently rely on elevation to offer that class, and then they'll enroll or serve students from across the district in the class offered by elevation.
But there are teachers who want it different, who want something different.
Yeah, they've expressed a desire to be able to offer that at the school level.
And create the classes?
Yeah.
Themselves? But they have to document, there has, there's a documentation process in order to use it?
Yeah, that they would want to make sure that they're documenting properly with, like their attendance and, and various aspects that are different from the systems that they currently use. So they say elevation is set up really well to manage that, but the, the high, the local high school or middle school is not set up well for it. So they're like, educators in that space want to do this, but.
Oh, it's the mo- it's the participa- participation monitoring that's problem. I'm trying to figure out what's problematic.
Yeah.
So the teacher knows what they want to teach, and they can film it or whatever, record it or whatever. But the problem is knowing when the kids are on, which kids are on, et cetera.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
What student information system does Cherry Creek use?
I'm not, I'm not sure.
Are they back to, are they using what everybody else is using? Yeah, see, for the longest time, they don't use the same system that a lot of others do. That's maybe just a kind of a, because I know in Aurora, we actually have done some of this and maybe had less trouble tracking. We used to do October count, but.
Okay, great. The next example is the Village High School in Academy School District Twenty. Again, I'm referring to this as a blended model. This is a school that I know some of you are familiar with as you've been able to visit the school in person. Village High School has a physical location. However, it uses a mostly online curriculum, meaning that courses are accessible through a learning management system, and students have a level of choice as to when they engage in the courses. Some classes at the school are offered in person to, and teachers are regularly available on-site with wide access for students to work with the teachers. Students attend throughout the week, but with higher flexibility in deciding the amount of time that they spend at the school. For those who have seen the school in operation, on any given day, you'll see many students in the environment actively engaged in teacher-pupil instruction and in-person learning activities. In spite of that, the school operates as a multi-district online school. So the technical definition today is multi-district online. Under state law, a multi-district online school is funded at a lower per pupil rate, as shown on this slide. And the reason they would choose this is because it gives, the multi-district model gives them more flexibility for the equivalency of the seat time. And then because they're centrally located, it, they have a lot of students who want to enroll, and they've chosen to open up enrollment in that way. The final example that I want to highlight is Colorado Early College's Homeschool Enrichment Program. This program is being highlighted as it is one of the schools that received variance waivers over the last two years. The structure of this program is unique. Students participate in online learning experiences through the MyTech High provider. Learning time is tracked by the student and parent through a learning log. And if sufficient instructional hours that meet the state definition of instructional time can be demonstrated, the school may receive up to half of a full-time equivalent for stu- each student enrollment. The table below is transcribed from the MyTech High website, and it shows what a typical student's schedule may look like. One design element that I'd like to point out is that all of the learning experiences here are delivered through online means. The students enrolled in this program are enrolled through a brick and mortar school. However, they are often receiving a fully online education. With that background, I will note that the model operates as a program within a brick and mortar school. The program only serves homeschool students, so students who are funded will show as part-time homeschool students. As a part-time homeschool student, the student may be funded at half of the per pupil rate for the brick and mortar school. The programming challenges for this school include that no more than forty percent of the classes can be online or blended, based on our current guidance, and at least twenty percent of the online classes would need to be synchronous to account for instructional time. As a result, the school sought a waiver to exceed the forty percent requirement and to have flexibility on the synchronous learning requirement. I'll also note as a disclaimer that there are some learning experiences provided by MyTech High that would not count as instructional hours. We view that as a separate issue, though. Probably don't want to go into that today. Now, before. Now, before jumping ahead, I thought this might be a nice time to, oh, yeah.
Thank you, that'd be a good question there. Homeschool students funded part-time, do they have to take state assessments?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Before jumping ahead, I thought this might be a nice time to summarize what has been covered so far. At this time, we've provided some history and context of the Blended Learning Initiative, where the work came from and the timeline of the activities. In addition, we've looked at some blended learning models currently in use in the state. Next, we'll provide an update on the recent stakeholder engagement work as part of the Blended Learning Initiative that has been carried out this past fall and summer. The purpose of this engagement work over the summer was to collect feedback from a broad range of stakeholders. The monthly activities of the initiative largely involved engagement with school and district leaders, operating blended programs. And so we wanted to make sure we found a way to collect feedback from parents, teachers, and other interested parties as well. In carrying out this work, we contracted with the Keystone Policy Group to implement a stakeholder feedback process. From June through decen- uh, sep- June through September, Keystone administered a statewide public survey that was also promoted through the departmental communication channels. Based on the feedback received, Keystone then began running online focus groups to explore more deeply some of the feedback and themes that were found in the survey responses. When students returned back to school in the fall, Keystone conducted additional focus groups and also conducted two listening sessions with superintendents across the state. Finally, Keystone facilitated a focus group with the teachers' cabinet this fall. Based on the surveys and focus groups conducted, Keystone developed the report that you see here and that you also have available as a board doc. In the report, you'll see the following six key themes that are highlighted. Related to the remainder of today's presentation, I'd like to focus on the first two themes. These themes were empower local leaders to expand the use of blended learning and to reform policies as needed to increase fundability of blended learning. As noted earlier, there are current policies that limit the use of blended learning in brick-and-mortar environments, and that these limitations can impact funding eligibility for some students. Thus, if members of the board would like to shape these policies, we believe that there are, these are the primary options to look at. The options include making adjustments to the school finance rules, extending the variance waiver into the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, continuing with the current guidance, or updating the guidance related to blended and online learning. If we look at the first option to explore making changes to school finance rules, we have put together a concept of what a possible change could look like. Under the current rules, we find definitions for the minimum amount of instructional hours to qualify a student for full-time or part-time funding. We also see some pretty specific descriptions of what time counts and does not count to meet the instructional hour requirements. As mentioned earlier, for brick-and-mortar students, instructional time is calculated by bell schedules and calendars. For online schools, these same classes would be assigned equivalency. Given these two calculations, one idea is that the board could adjust rules so that a blended student would have seat time calculated through a combination of actual hours of in-person learning and equivalency applied to online learning. Here's a more, here's more specificity for how this could work. For this example, the the school finance rules would first be changed by adding two definitions. The first definition would be to add a new type of course known as something like a hybrid course, and that the course definition would incorporate a range of learning approaches that we see. For example, hybrid could include blended, online, and independent study courses. The second step would be to add a definition for something like a hybrid course catalog. Through the rule, schools and districts would then be called on to publish a hybrid catalog at the beginning of the year with descriptions of hybrid courses available and the equivalency calculations that would apply to those courses. This catalog could then be used by our audit team to determine what level of funding a student should qualify for. The following visual shows how such a rule could be implemented in practice. For this example, we're showing a blend of a brick-and-mortar and online schedule. For this student, their schedule is broken up into two parts. The first half of the day is in-person and follows a bell schedule. The second half of the day, the student is learning away from the building, but through digital curriculum. As you can see from the calculations, a bell schedule is used to calculate instructional hours for brick-and-mortar time, and an equivalency statement would then be used for the online learning portion. Our audit team would evaluate the schedule based on whatever the school or district published within their hybrid course catalog. So that's a concept for how a rule could be explored. Another option to explore for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year is to expand the variance waiver for those schools, districts, or BOCs that may need it. This step is something that the department can already do. We're inclined to extend this flexibility for next year so that systems relying on this waiver can begin planning for next year. However, we wanted to check with the board to see if there were any concerns. The map below shows a distribution of schools or districts that requested a variance waiver for the current year. We also wanted to share an update for you in terms of participation in the variance waiver. This chart provides data on the number of students impacted by the waiver as reported by the schools or districts requesting this flexibility. Our team conducted analysis based on the type of funding code that applied to each student impacted by the waiver. This table provides a breakdown, and as you'll see, the number of students impacted grew by approximately a thousand students this past year, and the distribution mostly is related to full-time students and part-time homeschool students. The other two options to look at would be to either continue or update departmental guidance related to blended and supplemental online courses. Again, this is something that can be worked out on the departmental level, but ultimately needs to be aligned to the rule and to statute. During the pandemic, we provided greater clarification regarding how supplemental online and blended classes can apply within the current rule and statutory framework. We put guidance in place, setting a forty percent cap on blended or supplemental on course, online courses for brick-and-mortar kids, and the minimum expectation for synchronous instruction for fully online courses. Before the the pandemic, the guidance looked different, and the summary of it is outlined below. Before the pandemic, the key piece was that systems needed to differentiate blended and supplemental online learning from independent study. The way that this would be done is that they would need to define how teacher-student interaction will be documented and to ensure that these practices were included in the district-adopted educational process. This has often proven to be very challenging to implement and has likely resulted in many systems choosing to avoid blended and supplemental designs out of fear of having insufficient documentation to support their practices. That said, I did want to highlight it as there is space within the department where we can adjust this guidance.
Bill, describe what is referred to as independent study.
Well, I'll do my best, but I I I think of independent study as, you know, like my daughter is taking a Latin class right now where the typical teacher is not available during her schedule, so she takes an independent study, and the teacher provides some direction for, you know, how to progress through that course. But under the current school finance rule, the only time that would be counted for instructional time would be the time where she's directly engaged with the teacher in in lessons and things like that.
Okay, the way I recall independent study as well is when there's a student who believes they don't need to take a particular class, that they want to test out of it. But it doesn't sound like, that was called independent study, but it doesn't sound like that's independent study because there wasn't that much participation on the part of the teacher.
Okay.
But that, they still ended up getting credit.
And I may defer to Jennifer in case she has some context on that as well.
Yeah, unfortunately, she had to go to her other appointment. But I can just chime in a little bit. I mean, I think that's part of the challenge our team has faced, is the definition of independent study. It's very loose, and different districts use it different ways, and how it relates to, like, our school finance team has been using it as part of, like, how they can, like, just this other class that districts can use. But the problem is, is it could be anything from underwater basket weaving, which doesn't necessarily, you know, contribute to, well, I don't want to offend all those baths, underwater basket weavers, but, you know. And so putting some guardrails or some more specificity on how independent study, I think different districts use that term in very different ways.
Right, in order to to build up your credits for graduation.
Yeah, and there would be different ways you could administer that term. But we're trying to put some general guardrails so that, like, you couldn't just have a whole schedule of independent studies and not have any idea, you know, what that student was was taking.
Okay, I think board member Solis may have a question.
I don't really have a question, but it kind of goes to what she was saying. I mean, I would almost say that's almost like what District Six does on our personal learning plan. I mean, if you're a teacher and you have thirty kids in your class, and the the challenge is, well, the old way was you taught the same thing to all thirty kids. Well, what we recognize is we have kids that are advanced and ready to move forward. We have kids right where the teacher is, and we have kids that are behind. So what we've done with blended learning is those kids that are ready to move ahead, they can move on to the next thing online, and, but the teacher follows what they're doing and is able to look up all of their work, and then the kids in the middle, they're teaching, she's teaching them the the current thing, and then the kids that are falling behind, it's because they do blended learning within this instruction, she can tell exactly where the kids are missing and what she needs to do with these kids to get them to the next step. Or is there something on the computer that's supplemental that will help them understand that in a way that wasn't taught the first time? And what's so great about this is that there's weekly tests, and the teacher can specifically find out, okay, this is the step that the kid is missing, I need to go back and cover that again. Or I have this many kids, but what's also nice is that it's it's a personal learning plan. So if I'm advanced and I want to keep going, I can do that within the same classroom realm. So that's, we called it blended learning, and yet it's not necessarily what's in here. And again, it's, I I think we've been behind the ball, and I think COVID kind of jump-started us into work that we probably should have been doing a while back. But yeah, I look forward to really describing and and getting some very clear messaging around what all these opportunities are, so that schools know, and then also that parents know. And then if you think this is complicated in English, try understanding this in a whole nother different language. So I think we do need to be better on our definitions.
If I might, did you have more of the structured presentation to go through before we open it up for questions?
I think what I would just say is, thanks for being patient with me. I know I covered a lot there. This is my last slide, so we really are at a point. And what was intended by this slide is just to kind of show, schedule-wise, how we think about the various options and when action may be needed with them. The one I'll highlight is the variance waiver. Is, I would love to give feedback to the field soon, so if there are hesitations, I'd love to hear them today. But otherwise, with the rulemaking, if that's something the board would like to explore, we would be happy to bring a draft forward. And we were thinking that with that, maybe looking at the April or May schedule, if you wanted those to take effect for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Cotton Steady. That really helps. I think I'm probably not the only board member who was invited to tour a facility in my local district. I was given the opportunity to tour Cherry Creek Elevation, which I really appreciated. One of the things I want to make sure that we don't do is cut off some of the positive innovation that's happening at campuses where they may already have known that that they had a critical mass of students who wanted online options, but also brick-and-mortar options or something like a blended learning option. But I think if COVID did one thing in education that may have been positive is that it highlighted that for some kids, this option is really important and really meets a need for them. So maybe that happened in families that didn't realize that that a blended option might be for them going forward, and they made that discovery once they had that chance to to sample some online coursework. I know there are some limitations that came forward or that have come to the fore. For example, if you make the decision for a variety of reasons, one of which is funding, and the other of which is wanting to make sure that you have really strong academic standards and performance, if a district chooses to have their facility be a single district school, they're limited to ten students from outside of the district. And I think as as I've shared, but I want my colleagues to be able to hear it as well, I'm hearing from at least one quality, high-quality operator that they, or district, that they would like to see if it is not possible to have that be calibrated so that it is reflective of the student population. So for example, if you if you have a very large district, maybe the ten-student limit is a bit harsh compared to a smaller district that might be running a similar facility. And that may be something that's in statute, and if it is, if we're limited statutorily to that ten students from out of district for a single district school in in the blended learning model, it might be something that we might want to talk about considering advocating for in the future. Because if a district is very large, that's an awfully tight limit for them. So that was one of the bits of feedback that I got. The other thing I wanted to throw out, just for the board's consideration and for your consideration, Mr. Cotton Steady, if you want to give us thoughts and reflections from the committee that you're working with or the working group. I think the elephant in the room is that we have a combination of districts or operators that are really raising the bar and working very hard to get good results and good academic outcomes. And then there may be some online institutions that have some difficult outcomes. And I think when we talk about guardrails, particularly around online coursework, sometimes those guardrails, I think, are are set with the best intentions of protecting kids from the worst outcomes in terms of low performance or low expectation or or low growth, low achievement. And I wonder if the working group gave consideration to calibrating guardrails with performance in mind. For example, if you have a blended learning, single-district institution that is getting good results, would they have the ability to have more flexibility? I know we're discussing a whole lot of topics all at once, and that makes it a little confusing. But given that the logic behind some of these guardrails is the protection of making sure that we get good student engagement for the purpose of ensuring that we have good growth and achievement, then it might make sense that that those guardrails may not need to be as limiting if a school or if an institution has already proven that they are already achieving high levels of growth and achievement, and they have high participation in the assessments, that might be something worth weighing if our if our aim is to make sure that we're not letting kids fall through the cracks in institutions where we're not keeping tight enough track of whether or not they're engaging.
Okay, great.
So those are a few thoughts. There are many more, and I I'm hopeful that the the thoughts, as shared in writing by the district that I visited, might become part of the the record that your working group can access because all of these concerns are important, but I don't want to overwhelm my colleagues with this entire entire menu. I may get to a few of these points in a moment. I think their other concern was the requirement for the twenty percent course load. No more than twenty percent of a student's courses can be online if the student is enrolled in a brick-and-mortar school. I'm getting feedback that that doesn't always work for every student, and sometimes that leaves them without the agility to be as responsive to student needs as they would like to be. So that might be one of those examples where if a school does have good achievement levels and and it's documented with decent participation levels, that might be an example of where we might want to take another look at offering the flexibility where a school has proven that, in fact, they are providing quality outcomes for students. Those are just a few of my thoughts. Colleagues? Board member Plummer?
Have a question, and then I'll have a thought about. So as you're asking us about these.
So as you're asking us about these options, is it a possibility to extend the variance and look at rules, or are you asking us to pick from what you, what your proposals are?
Yes, you could do both.
Okay.
Yeah, and I actually think that both would be great.
I think both would be great, too, because I think this, there's a lot of nuance, and there's a lot that warrants a lot of study. And I think there's some great possibilities, and I'm very excited because there's so much out there. And I think so much, if we open this up, could benefit some of our rural schools and offer different options for people that haven't, students that haven't been able to take advantage of this. I guess, Board member McClellan, I see where you're coming from with your statement and wanting to make sure we're paying attention to quality. I do think some of the places that need this most are some places that might be struggling. And it's not because of anything that's like a past history and not, but I don't know that I would use that only a high, already high-performing district or school gets the pass and nobody else does. Because I don't, I think it's all about how tight the controls are on oversight, their commitment to making sure that standards are held versus that. Otherwise, we're going to have the same problem where we essentially keep inequities going. And I don't want to see that happen with new rules that we would put forth.
I can appreciate that point.
So can a, like a district, if they wanted, can they offer to their current students like a hybrid option? So for instance, like we're half the class, if they wanted to work from home, or? Is that an option, or? I just, maybe I'm really confused because I was listening to you say that it's got to be this other entity kind of runs it. But if there's a district that can really run it themselves, can they offer that?
Yeah, so if they wanted to create a program that had both in-person and a remote design, they could do that. They would just, in, under current rules and guidelines, they would just need to make sure that what they were running was properly documented so that they could qualify students for appropriate funding levels. And the feedback that we've received is it's very difficult to do that. And so many districts have shied away from that because they don't want to implement something that, three years later, when we go do an audit, we say, we don't see sufficient documentation to say that the off-site learning met the requirements.
Well, so, I mean, how could we help them with that? I mean, you're saying it's tough for them to document it. I'm just thinking of all these, you know, programs across the country in college now that offer these hybrid options. Even law schools now are offering the hybrid option where they consider you in-person, and they have a way that they're able to track it digitally. Once you log in, it goes on. They have a lot of requirements. Is it just that some of the districts aren't there yet, or is it platform issues?
Yeah, I think a lot of it. So one is that we do have the current guidance that restricts the practice to like forty percent of a brick and mortar schedule. Or if they want more flexibility, they may move into just operating as an online school. But then you see some challenges where it's like, you know, I'll say, maybe I attend Central High School, and I don't want Central High School to be an online school. So I want to maintain that brick and, so that's, I think, where they've encountered some barriers with that. But as you mentioned, you know, like we're seeing more of that evolution in higher ed. And you could see a similar type of approach within K-12. If I extend that metaphor, you know, like you look at a student transcript, and you see the courses, right? And those courses link back to a catalog. So under the proposed rule concept, you could think of it in a similar way. Where as long as you have a catalog that outlines those courses, and they show up on a student's schedule, then that seems like it's probably easier to implement for a district than the current regulations that we have.
Yeah, because I think I like you gave the example of like a local school because I've even toured a school, been on the previous board I was on, where I'd walk into one of our classrooms, and every student is on the computer, and the teacher's literally at the desk giving instruction. It's not like when I was growing up, and they're on a chalkboard. And so, I mean, essentially, that child can pick up and go to any room, library, building. Why wouldn't we offer, I mean, why wouldn't we find a way to kind of help them with funding that?
And I will say that that approach that you described, we would not have an issue with it today. So that would fall within just a normal brick and mortar schedule. And you could do online while in the building, and we would just use the calendar and schedule to calculate those hours.
But they just have to be in the building?
The issue is when they leave the building, that we've struggled with figuring out how to calculate that eligibility.
That just seems so bizarre, like, it's like a...
It's evolving, right?
Yeah, I mean, it just seems easy in my mind, but there's probably more to it.
Yeah.
Dr. Skarsak.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Remind me, or refresh my memory, or maybe I never knew, why the difference in funding between multi-district online and single-district online? What was the philosophy of funding a multi-district online, five hundred dollars roughly, or something less per student?
So I'll say my facts are imperfect. I'm speculating somewhat. But the logic that I understand, one is the multi-district rate is essentially set at where approximately our lowest-funded district is funded. The idea, I think, being that if you operate a multi-district, you could be located in this geographic area where the cost factors, you wouldn't want to fund a multi-district at a higher rate than an existing brick and mortar. So they essentially got close to that level. And I think the logic was because you can operate the entity anywhere.
So lower cost, lower overhead kind of philosophy. And I forgot that, and I shouldn't, I don't know why I could say that. Because I used to do October count, and I know my funding, that it's different for each district, right? So if you're pulling in students from different districts, figuring out the calculations would be impossible. So you'd need to set something, but, okay.
Yeah.
All right, so with these schools that are asking then for, I'm not sure I'm getting the district size. If we're a big, really big district, then should we be able to have, okay, I see. If I'm enrolling a thousand students, the odds are ten of them are going to be from out of district as much higher than if I've got a hundred students, and ten is the limit. Now I understand the argument. Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm going, Dr. Esser has a question, and then I'll check in with our online board members.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Cottonsteady. Is part of the problem that we don't have consistent definitions of all this? Is that something that would help solve part of the problem?
It could help. So that's where, I think, like that idea of hybrid, and we throw, because we currently do not have legal definitions for supplemental or blended. We have clarified those practices within our audit guide, but they don't link to rule or statute to say that that's where those terms come from.
So that might be the first step, or does the legislature have to take the first step?
We believe that it could be addressed in rule. Like you could put those definitions in rule.
Okay, we could do it. And then it would be easier to look at funding and comparability and all the rest.
Yeah.
Okay, that makes sense to me.
And I can give just some context on it, is if you look at the School Finance Act, it essentially talks a lot about, you know, how certain, like the, how a district PPR is determined and things like that.
Yeah.
But then it delegates to the state board how we fund kids. So that's where the rule has a lot of, like, you guys have a lot of space to say how we're going to count those hours and what types of practices are in and out. So that's, it is within state board authority to make those descriptions.
And your huge team with all the extra hours you have would put that together for us, and then we could discuss it.
That sounds great, yes. We are happy to do that.
Thank you.
I have one of them here, I think, hiding somewhere.
Thank you, Mr. Cottonsteady.
Poor Mr. Cottonsteady, we really have just put you in the hot seat today. So I want to pivot to our online board members, Mr. Durham and Dr. Shuffle. Do you have something that you want to ask Mr. Cottonsteady?
Madam Chair, I don't have any questions right now, but I would love to follow up with Mr. Cottonsteady. Just thinking about the different models and implications, and just a clarification of when we would be apt to address this in rule. Is that in a month or two months?
So our thinking is that we could either, like, if the board wanted to adjust rule and have those rules take effect for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, we would want to bring a draft and notice rulemaking in either April or May.
All right, that's helpful. I think the goal here is to provide as much flexibility as we can, since we know the schools and the students are looking for that. And I think there's just a lot of, a lot of things we can think about to give that kind of flexibility. So thank you.
Yeah, and it sounds like there's some evolving happening in the field after people who maybe didn't think they were going to experience online learning did experience online learning, and maybe some demand went up in some quarters. So before I pivot to Mr. Durham, I just want to throw the question out there. How urgently do we need to address the issue of whether or not to grant an extension on the waiver?
So that one, I think I would just love to hear if there were hesitations with us.
Okay.
Because we can apply it at the, like, we don't need the board to vote on it or anything like that. We can do it at the department level. We just would not want to act on something that you all were opposed to.
Okay. And after Mr. Durham has a chance, I might ask you to just give us a very brief thumbnail of what happens if we don't extend it, and how long we would be extending it for if we do.
Okay.
That would help. Okay, Mr. Durham?
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. I guess I'll comment on the waiver thing first. I think it's a good idea to offer it for the twenty-three, twenty-fourth, where are we, twenty-three, twenty-fourth school year. We're only talking about slightly, looks like right at about four percent of the total students in the state would be affected by granting the waiver, so the cost, one way or the other, not significant. And I still think there's a lot to learn about this, about this issue. I will, Mr. Cottonsteady, first of all, I appreciate your visiting Village High School. I hope you found that to be an instructive trip when you got down there. And two, I think this presentation was able to boil down some complicated issues probably better than maybe any other presentation I've seen on, since I've been a member of the board. Because there are a lot of nuances to this, but you were successful in making them, I think, as understandable as possible. I think the problems we're going to have, and some things that Mr. Cottonsteady would like you to look at, is you've got two schools that I know of functioning as multi-district online schools, Village High School and Goal Academy. And I think these schools are as different as night and day. If you, and I've visited both of them, but Village High School, I think, has a demographic that's very different from the demographic of Goal Academy. They both utilize some, and Village really utilizes their brick and mortar piece, I think extensively, based on what I saw. Goal Academy, I think, tries, has tried over time to use more of a blended approach, and with their drop-in centers, which prior to the pandemic appeared to me to be draining ground and getting to be, at least have some chance of being more successful. So I would really, you know, I think, you know, both those, both those schools have the same designation, but they're very different. They serve very different niches of people. And I think we want to be careful in how we do that. The other thing that I really think would be valuable is to find a way to encourage the existing brick and mortar schools to be able to offer more online options. Because I think the blended approach could be as effective, or at least almost as effective as in-person warning, where kids have a place to come in on a regular basis and receive tutoring, coaching, get their questions answered by teachers. So I think that could be very helpful. But I think, you know, I think some, trying to deal with different circumstances for different children, it's not a new concept. When I was in high school, we had, and probably, I mean, there wasn't much of my state funding, so essentially, district dictated, but we had probably half a dozen to a dozen Olympic skaters in our high school class. And those kids were very part-time. I mean, they would, they would show up for about three or four classes, and I'm going to guess just avoid the truancy laws, and then have the rest of the day, because the Olympic skaters train eight or ten hours a day. And given what we have out there in terms of economic needs for children, transportation costs and needs, preserving as many options as we possibly can, I think is a good idea. And I do think it's a good idea to try and draw, if we can, homeschool children into as much participation in brick and mortar activities as possible and to, for the socialization value. And this blended idea might be, might be a way to get some of that done, to offer partially online, partially in-person courses that would result in additional socialization for those kids. So I'd like to see us keep as many options open as possible. And as you, as you look at this going forward, I think, if you look, approach the rulemaking with the idea that we don't want to, we don't want to damage the program that's going on in Cherry Creek. We don't want to damage the program that's going on at Village High School. And we probably want to encourage the expansion of both those programs. But we also don't want to damage the traditional multi-district online or the hybrids that I hope will speed up to help, that will spring up to help serve homeschool students. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Durham. Board members, other questions? For, I would say for staff, but it's, Mr. Cottonsteady's handling all of these questions.
And notes in my hand.
Yeah, I'll say, Mr., any other questions for Mr. Cottonsteady?
Can I just ask, is this a conversation in which we need to be concerned with the regulations that relate to making sure that we don't have ghost students on the books, where institutions are taking per pupil funding for students that aren't logging on? Is that a degree to which, is that part of the rationale for some of these guardrails to try to make sure that we actually know these are students that are engaging and that really are still attending?
I think the best I could say to that is that's what our current audit process is designed for, is to go in and look at the schedules and the documentation to ensure we're not paying for students that we can't prove that they qualify for funding.
Okay.
So that the proposals we're exploring would still be within the structure that leverages an audit process, but that they have clean documentation to work from.
And do we feel like that system is working fairly well right now?
I think so. I mean, I think what, you know, the feedback that we're hearing is that it may be stifling innovation, that fear of not qualifying for funding has limited the types of innovations that schools or systems have utilized. But it also emphasizes that it is a check that the systems take seriously. And so they do want to ensure that they're educating students and can prove it. So I think in that way, it's working quite well.
Okay, okay. I think there is one other concern that I heard from my district that I haven't given voice to yet, and that is the twenty percent synchronous time. In addition to the twenty percent max course load for brick and mortar students in terms of their online coursework, that was a concern. But in addition, the requirement for twenty percent synchronous time, they had concerns about why that particular number was indicated and why they have to have that limitation. So it might be a topic for the committee to explore or for the working group to explore. That might be feedback they're already well aware of, but...
Yeah, and what I can say is... Yeah, and what I can say is, where that came from was that question in the first full year of the pandemic. And systems were saying, we want to offer, we want to continue to be able to offer a fully remote option to brick and mortar kids. So if I'm enrolled at George Washington High School during the first sema, or the, the spring semester of nineteen-twenty, I was fully online, but I'm enrolled at George Washington. In the following year, that option was available. And the question was, do we extend that for a, a, a second full year? And we said, we will offer that, we'll allow you to do that, but with some level of, like, expectation that you are providing at least 20% synchronous. So we're saying, you can offer that option for brick and mortar kids, but we want to make sure that at least a, a full day a week, students were getting engagement with their teachers. And we aligned the blended and supplemental with that. At this point, like, if we wanted to take away the 20% synchronous, we could. So like, that's within our space if we wanted to do it. So like, I'm happy to reflect on that feedback within the context of the initiative.
But then it begins to beg the question, how do you define an online student versus a brick and mortar student? How are you a brick and mortar student if, if you don't have synchronous or in-person learning?
Yeah. And, and I'll say that if the rulema, like, if we make changes to rule, that would probably address it, and those forty, 20% requirements could go away because the rule would create a new way of structuring it.
And there, there may be cautions that I am not aware of yet, that I would want to hear before we would make that decision. I imagine other board members would want to hear all those cautions as well, but I wanted to get that out there, because I promised I would give voice to these concerns, and I do want to understand it before we make any big sweeping decisions.
Great.
And I'm thinking, like, let's talk about elementary second grade reading. A student takes online and has no contact with a teacher at all. Would that be an appropriate course? Those are the things we think about and where these rules come in. But actually, that's what Bill gets to think about.
What kind of feedback did we not give you? Sorry. What kind of feedback have we not given you yet? And then I'll, I'll hear from Dr. Schroeder.
I, I think that this is good. So what I'm kind of taking away right now is that things feel pretty good of looking at the variance, to give some assurance to schools that they would have that flexibility, and that to explore bringing a concept for possible rulemaking. That's kind of where I am right now.
Okay, so we may need to put this on the agenda for an upcoming meeting soon, and, and, and then go forward from there. And Dr. Schroeder, did you have more?
Well, I'm just protecting July, so I'm going to suggest that it gets on the, the notice of hearing gets on the agenda in April, because it's a two-month deal. And I do think we, our districts deserve to have us, if we're going to change the rules, to have us have that vote in June, so that they know what's coming up in August. Otherwise, we'd be looking at it in August. I think that might be discomforting to our school districts.
I appreciate the math on that.
Commissioner?
I think that's one of the reasons why we wanted to get the flexibility for the variance, so that you guys weren't rushed into a big decision. So, since we're hearing that you're okay with us giving the variance for next year, we can take our time with the rules to really play out the implications, so that we can get the definitions right. The, you know, devil's always in the details, so once you start getting into this, it gets complicated.
I really appreciate that, yeah. I think if an extension of the variance buys us the calm and cool-headed time for good quality deliberation on rules that are meant to be lasting beyond any variances, that makes a lot of sense.
Another question I have, though, as we were getting feedback, have there been discussions about what should be the definitions? In other words, from whom will we get suggestions? Since it sounds to me like we have different experiences in different districts with different, different definitions, and I, I just have a feeling there might be some input.
Board members, Solis?
Yeah, I think we should go out on a limb and name them after us, since we'll be setting them, we'll be setting precedents. This is pretty huge, so.
I think I missed that. What was that? All right. So, board members, anything more for Mr. Cotton Steady? And Mr. Cotton Steady, do you need anything more from us?
This has been extremely helpful. I may add one thing, because I know that the questions came, or comments came up a couple times, was on the multi-district online, and something like, should a village high school be a multi-district online? And just to say, and to confirm that, we believe that that, if, if changes were to be made there, they'd have to be in statute. And that, you know, I don't know if any ideas would come out or not, but one that was discussed within the initiative was the idea of, like, if, we, we saw some models where the programs were high in-person, like, there's a lot of in-person activity happening within a geographic area, and the need for multi-district designation was because the kids who were coming in on a daily basis happened to cross district lines. Is the question, is that, was, was that school model intended to be a multi-district online? And if it's not, that might be a, a space where a different definition could address that.
Yeah, and I think that raises a couple of concerns for districts that are having to make that really challenging course, and I, I got some of that feedback at the school that I toured. One of the areas of concern becomes performance. If you attract a whole lot of students from all across the state, you may have less control over student engagement. You may attract through no fault of your own, a, a significant number of students who do not adequately engage, and then that affects your performance frameworks, potentially. And then the other concern becomes funding, because of course, that's then the lower funded model, and that may not have been their intent. So it may be that we, what gets fleshed out here, among other things, is the need to advocate for some flexibility with respect to how many students can be allowed at a school that is not an online multi-district charter, but that nevertheless needs to accept students from outside of its borders in a manner that is sensitive to the size of the district, or the population of the district, so that a, a very, very large district might get a little bit more room than a smaller district proportional to their size. That might be something that we might want to go home and think about, whether, whether or not we might want to advocate for that across the street, because if I understand correctly, that might be a statutory limitation.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I think the issue here is that in a brick and mortar school, 20 students from across the border become mine for four years. There's no odd district, they're in my district, they are mine now. And it is the same for these, it's just that because of the rules we made it, so you had to recertify every year, they're, you know, so I get it, I get that, why, anyway, it's complicated, but, yeah, it makes, I get it.
Anything more, board members, before we wrap this item up? Board members, Solis?
I would just say thank you. This is a huge, huge thing on your plate, and I think, you know, it's probably moving that way anyway, but COVID probably really put it into high gear. So just thank you and your staff for, for all your work around this.
Well, and thank you for letting me come back. Really glad that we were able to have the conversation this month.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Cotton Steady. Much appreciated. All right, board members, we have very little left on our, on our plate. One of our items that we need to get through is item eighteen point oh-one from yesterday, individual board member reports. So don't all jump in at once. Who would like to begin this one?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Durham?
Thank you. I have nothing to report, and I do have an appointment coming up here at three o'clock, so I'd like to sign off, and thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Durham. Much appreciated. All right. Mr., Dr. Schroeder, did I see your hand go up?
Well, I'll be real quick. I went pretty much to the same things most of us did, the SMART Act, State of the State. Lisa and I were invited to the Martin Luther King event, and that was fun. The only other thing to talk about is the hot lunches, and I believe you all got an invitation this time. Last month, Kathy and I got a direct, because, because Donald Kay had our email address, we got invitations. It was about, I think it was supposed to have been about equity in charter schools. I'm not sure they actually got very deep into that. The upcoming one, which is next week, I think, is about the artificial intelligence issues that school districts are facing. The hot lunches are kind of interesting. I've been going to them for years. I'll be honest and say that, that I don't agree with all the positions that the Don Kay group take, but I, I really value their presentations, because they're just things that I don't hear about otherwise. And they did actually send three different articles for us to read, if we want to, before the lunch next week, just to learn a little bit. And I know that, what's it called, the artificial intelligence thing that writes? Yeah, that's been outlawed. That's roughly what this is going to be about, and it's been outlawed in New York City, if I'm not mistaken, et cetera. So I think this is timely information for us to hear about. So I just want to encourage you to consider it.
Very interesting. Thank you, Dr. Schroeder. Board member Plummer, would you like to go next?
I actually had lots of fun. So, again, that hot lunch was very interesting. I don't know if I'll be able to make this one, just because of the schedule, but I think it's a really, I never would have thought about the topic, so that's cool. But I did do a few school visits. I was invited to the Lorraine Edmondson STEM School in Thompson, and was invited by a third-grade teacher. And they are a magnet, STEM magnet, so the kids all prepared like a poster gallery walk for me about how they learn to do problem-based learning, and, you know, how PBLs prepare them to be creative, critical thinkers. So they each would explain. So both third-grade classes got together, I walked around, and then the kindergartners came through, and got to see it too. So they, they included their kindergartners, and it was just really cool, because the kids put a lot of work into the posters to explain to me how they're learning, drawings, graphs, things like, anything that they thought would explain their concept, and then they had to explain it to me. And of course, some kids were super shy, others were, you know, out there and one, you know, and so that was a really fun thing to do. And then, I'm told never to expect this again. Well, we had a Q and A, and they know way more about me now, because they wanted to know my favorite color. And, but anyway, at the end, I was asked for my autograph.
That's the sweetest thing ever.
It was adorable. And I'm sure there's many confused parents why a child would come home with this tiny slip of paper that said, "Great to meet you, loved meeting you", and my name, but hey, I'm going to take it. And that was, that's right, that, I'm, I'm done. So, and then I did join Rhonda Hannaford and her team for the presentation to Swink Elementary for the ESEA award, which also was very fun to see what a, what a great small school who's doing a lot for their kids, and just so much enthusiasm, and that was, it's always fun to reward teachers. And we had a chance to talk to the principal and teachers afterwards about all that they're doing, and it's very impressive. And then I headed down the road to La Hanta and had a tour with their superintendent and their board president of their schools. And they are also doing some really unique things in their district in terms of social emotional learning. Some of the programs, I went to their alternative school, did hear about some pretty big challenges, and I think this is typical in rural districts. They got a BES grant and had a extension built, and then they discovered that the contractor did not hook up the pipes. And it had been inspected, it had been, and they're having trouble finding somebody to come fix it. But, you know, here you have this beautiful new extension, you did everything right, and now they're having difficulty using parts of their new space. And so it's, it just speaks to the physical challenges that happen in some of our outline areas, just for us to be aware of. So, thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Plummer. I'm, I'm envious that someone asked that. That's so fun that they asked for your autograph. I think that's pretty great. All right. Board members, who would like to go next? Dr. Skarsagat, and then Dr. Esser.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Very much like Member Schroeder said, we kind of all go to the same thing, so there's really no use in reiterating all those. The unique thing, two, two unique things I had, but one was the opportunity to sit on a panel for Emerge Colorado, which is an organization that recruits trains, I've got their site up here, recruiting, training, and providing networking for women who want to run for office throughout the state. And it was a panel of board members, myself and then some local board women, and all of the participants in this cohort are all women running for school boards across the state. So it was just humbling, fascinating, especially there's, we have such a diverse state, diverse issue. So that was a lot of fun. And then the other thing, just real quickly, I got to, went to a city council debate, and, but it was at a new school in Denver, DSST Elevate, which has been there two years. The building is just gorgeous. Got to meet with the principal briefly, and it's just fun. We're sitting in the cafeteria, and we're listening to this, and you're sitting there after about an hour, going, man, this is not, these are not made for adults, these are children's seats. I don't care if they're high school or not, just reminds of what it's like to be in school. So I would say those were the unique things. The other thing I would just say is I've been focusing and spending a lot of time with staff and Board Chair, getting my sea legs around the idea of being vice chair, which is, just spending time with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Skarsagat. Dr. Esser?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I got the opportunity to watch North, I shouldn't say watch, to not exactly grade, but to give feedback to 10th graders in world history at North Glenn High School in the STEM program. And they all have these, these huge, they're not exactly SMART boards, because they're portable, but they're very high-tech. The students had to figure out a problem that was environmentally impactful from one country to others. So it was very interesting. One group was mostly Spanish speakers, so they did give me their presentation in Spanish and then translated it, so they had given me a translation in English. So that was fascinating to see that that's how this particular school helps with multilingual learners. And one, one, it was just a pair, most of them were in fours. It was a young man and a young woman about North Korea. I have never learned so much about North Korea in 15 minutes in my life. And they did it from the standpoint of South Korea, the United States, Australia, and Japan. And the two kids that are in 10th grade could come up with who it impacts the most, how it impacts these other nations, and what's being done about it was amazing. And then I had the other group, anybody who's taught high school that, you know, didn't use the SMART board, wrote a few things on a piece of paper, and when I kind of mentioned that isn't quite the, the assignment they had, it was, "Oh, really? Oh, really? Yeah, really." So I did that, and then I had, unfortunately, my last meeting with GSAC, which is the Gifted and Talented Group in the state of Colorado. Mr. Varela, they are an amazing group of people. You will enjoy working with them, and, and you'll learn a lot. So that was the other thing. And we, we did, they did have a presentation about the lack of full funding for the requirements in statute. So that's what we were talking about. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Esser. Do we still have Board Member Shuffle with us?
Madam Chair, she wanted to let you know that she started driving, and that she didn't have anything for her board report today.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much. Okay, who would like to go next? I think it's down to the three of us, Board Member Solis, Varela, and, and me. Board Member Solis, would you like to take a turn?
Sure. So we had a teacher reach out to the actual whole board. Her name is Nicole Pacias, and since she lived in my district, it was directed towards me. So I did reach out to her and was able to meet in person. We met in Brighton, and I believe she lives in Commerce City, but she's a teacher in Brighton. Very, very. Very, very inspiring young Latina teacher. And to hear the way she feels about her students and the way she interacts with them, I mean, it just makes you wish we can clone her and have several of her. She was very interested in the legislative process around education and what she could do as a teacher to be part of that conversation and making sure that teachers' voices are heard. So I kind of directed her to a few different opportunities. One is the Latino Advocacy Day that's held in Denver, to ask her if she wanted to participate with that. And then I also introduced her to a couple of groups that also have actual people that work on Latino issues around education. So we had an amazing conversation. I think she's definitely an up-and-comer, so I would definitely be looking for her, and, and I hope she continues the, the work that she's doing because it definitely affects our kids, and, and representation does matter. So I will be on a panel next month for BETR scholarships, which is why I won't be able to do the retreat in February. So I'm looking forward to that. I've done some scholarship interviews through my time on the board of the Greeley Dream Team. These stories sometimes are just, I mean, they just speak to your heart and soul of, of what kids go through, what their thought process is. And then the other thing I was going to mention, and I think that Doc, Board Member Durham had mentioned this, and it's a very big conversation happening right now about cell phones in schools. And I wholeheartedly agree with Mr. Durham, except for this one fact. The more we talk about school shootings, as a parent, if this was my last lifeline to my kiddo, would I be okay giving that up? So I do think that's a conversation we're going to have to have in the future. It's a tough one. I agree with how dangerous these can be, especially social media, I'm, I'm very concerned about that. But looking at it from a parent's perspective, and although I don't have kids in the district right now, that would be a huge, huge thing for me as a parent, to give that lifeline up. So just make sure and keep that in your, your thoughts as we move forward, having those discussions.
Thank you, Board Member Solis. Board Member Varela?
Not much from the district. It's been more so getting my, I guess, getting in, in the groove and learning a lot of stuff, but great job from the staff, they've been very helpful. Angela Maramba's been wonderful, hooking me up with everything I needed to get set up with, and this has been a great first meeting. I have been getting a lot of calls from my district, but I keep telling them, give me one more week, just one more week, let me get my footing, but I hope to report more next month.
Very good. It's a lot, isn't it? It's a lot to learn on the front end when you're a new board member. So I will bore everyone with all the things that you already know that we all did. So I really appreciated being able to attend the inauguration of all of our statewide officials. I attended the SMART Act hearing, and then I really appreciated the opportunity to tour Cherry Creek Elevation and to hear about their program and what their hopes are for any changes we might make with respect to online and blended learning options. Lots and lots of meetings with Dr. Skarsagga and with staff, and thank you to staff as always for answering 1 million questions, especially Mr. Cottonsteady. So that's, that was, that was my last month. So with that, everyone, unless there's anything further, I, I think we're going to be adjourned until our next regular meeting scheduled for March 8th, when we will be looking forward to possibly having interviews for our RFP finalists, we hope.
Do we have a ledge meeting at the end of February?
Yes, we will have a legislative meeting. Give me one moment.
Madam Chair, I think you also have a special meeting for February, next week, right?
Ah, let me open that up and I'll... Yes. It looks like we will have an RFP committee meeting, when we will go over RFP responses on the 16th of February. And that will be five of the board members who serve on that subcommittee. And then we'll have our legislative meeting on the 24th of February. All right. So until next time, thank you, everyone.